Good evening. I'd like to call this January 9, 2018, meeting of the Northfield Township Board to order. Please stand for the invocation and the pledge.
Dear God, you are the source of all that is good. You are the source of all our blessings. Thank you for every gift we have been given. We thank you for the opportunity to come and gather together today. We ask for your hand of blessings on this meeting. We ask that you would guide and direct our meeting so that it is full of wisdom, productivity, and respect for one another. Thank you for helping us to accomplish our work and goals today. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the role Clerk Manley.
Bellinger.
Here.
Mr. Dockett, who doesn't have a mic.
Oh, okay.
Where's my mic?
I don't know.
We didn't think you were coming back.
(laughing).
Here.
Zelenak.
Here.
Chockley.
Here.
Manley, here.
You do.
Otto.
Here.
Chick.
Here.
All here.
Okay.
So, we do have a quorum tonight. Thank you, all the members of the public who've come tonight to be with us, and then our staff and attorney and township manager. Okay, moving on, we have a consent agenda. Now, the-
I want a mic.
You got a mic.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay. The consent agenda is for us to just receive all of these reports unless we have some questions about them, we can pull them out. But otherwise, once we're past the consent agenda and we've adopted them, we shouldn't need to talk about them later. Does anyone need to pull anything out of the consent agenda? Mr. Dockett?
Yes, I'd like to pull the minutes, the bills, the fire report, the police report, and the sewer.
Okay, minutes, bills, fire report. What else, Mr. Dockett?
The minutes, the bills, the fire, the police, the sewer. I've got a couple of questions on, you know, a few, just a few minutes I can probably-
Okay, fire and police, okay. Well, I'd like to take those before we get into the rest, at the beginning of the meeting then, no, at the end of the meeting. No, at the beginning of the meeting. Sorry, I'd like our department heads to be able to leave when we're done talking about them, so. Minutes, bills, fire, police. Okay. So, we will take the minutes, the bills, the fire report, and the police report as zero, so right at the beginning of the meeting. Did I get them all, Mr. Dockett?
All the ones I want.
Okay, great. Anyone else?
Sewer, right?
Sewer? Did you want the sewer report? Okay, and sewer report. Okay, so those will go in that order as zero. Okay. May I have a motion to adopt the balance of the agenda as amended? I'll make that motion. Does anyone?
A second.
Okay, motion by Chockley and a second by Otto. Any more discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, thank you. Now, we have an opportunity for call to the public. If you'd like to speak to us tonight, please feel free to come on up to the microphone, turn it on, and state your name and your address, and share with us whatever you'd like, and try to keep your comments to three minutes. Thank you.
Mary Devlin, 9211 Brookside Drive. I would like to say how much the Kiwanis store has meant to our community. They've given people a place to shop where prices are affordable, and there is something there for anyone of any age. And a special thanks to Mary and Margaret for their dedication, and also a thank you to all of the volunteers who helped Margaret and Mary run things smoothly. The Kiwanis gives much to this township, and I hope this board will grant their request this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Welcome.
Good morning.
Am I on?
Put it right up to your mouth, really cozy.
Oh, yea.
I'm Lynn Slagle. I live at 9390 Summerland Drive. First of all, I want to thank every board member here because I sat on the Board of Education for 12 years, and I know the work that goes into it, so you all keep up the work. Second of all, there's another group that Mary had talked about, which is the Kiwanis Group. They work their butts off to help the community, to help the school. I'm excited that we're getting a new storefront. That's great. I do want to support the thought of them going into 75 Barker. When they first went into Main Street, my first thoughts were, can't we get something a little bit more stylish as a storefront on the Main Street? But I've supported them, and they have proven how wonderful they are. If you move them into 75 Barker, it puts a quaint thrift store into a quaint old building, and it would continue keeping people in town. I'm offering my support for them, just so you know. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. Hi. David Gordon, 5558 Helena Road. I would like to also support the Kiwanis moving into the 75 Barker Road. They're a great organization and really help this community. Happy New Year to everybody. At the last meeting, the board voted to lose between $8,000 and $11,000 by paying a fine to become a Detroit Edison customer again. Madam Supervisor, can you tell me if we know whether we're going to have to pay a fine and what it's going to be?
I do not know, but we will, we can deal with that.
We still don't know?
Mr. Ains may know, but this isn't the time for Q and A, so we'll look into that.
It was just a fast question.
Right.
Okay.
Well, we may be able to get to that.
Anyway, the board at the last meeting voted five to one to pay this fine, with only Treasurer Zelenak voting against it. Manager Ains apologized and accepted responsibility for this problem. I'm not sure what that means, because this board didn't ask our new manager to pay back the money, so I'm not quite sure what accepting responsibility really adds up to. But this issue brings me to what I wanted to talk about tonight, which is basically professionalism, accountability, and the process to achieve the goals of making smarter financial decisions. I'm not an expert on this process, but I have sat where you're sitting, and I think part of the process is figuring out the tough questions to ask and making sure you get answers before you make a decision. Without a good process, how do you know whether you're doing a professional job and who's accountable when things go wrong? Getting facts from people who know what they're talking about is fine, but then you need to ask them some tough questions and not make a decision until you get the answers. At the last meeting, you got a recommendation from the attorney and the manager, but I didn't hear any tough questions. You were told you had a bad contract. If it wasn't a good contract, how was it not a good contract? What were the risks? What might it cost if something went wrong, which it hadn't over the years and years that you'd had this contract? What was the likelihood that anything was going to go wrong? Had it ever happened to any other customers? Did that electricity provider save the township money, or did it cost us more? Will the DTE contract cost us more or less? Is the new contract with DT any better than the contract we had with the old customer? These were questions that weren't asked, and if they were asked, there were no legitimate answers that were given, and yet the decision was made to go ahead and lose the money. And that's the problem. I think it's important that this board was to find some professional in the business world who could help you in a seminar or something figure out what a process is for coming to a decision, especially when it comes to trashing tax dollars of the community. The last board lost $450,000 in our tax dollars by making a decision to sell bonds on the recommendation of the manager. That's not enough. You can't just say fine because some person says, "Let's do this." We deserve better. You promised better. Please start to deliver on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gordon. Welcome.
Hi.
Hi.
I'm Margaret Redell, 65141 West Date Mile. I'm here to speak on behalf of the Kiwanis and behalf of the townspeople. The townspeople love that silly store, and they really do. We've had a very good run. Poli's has been very, very generous to us. I don't want anybody to think Poli's is, quote, "kicking us out," or not. They have been very, very good to us, and they are in full support of whatever we decide to do. We would like to move into Barker. We would like to keep Barker for the people, 75 Barker for the people. We'd like to keep our Kiwanis store going. If that's possible, that would be a good thing for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else tonight? Okay. Mr. Ains, do you have a quick answer to that fine issue? If not, we can take it next meeting.
No, DT hasn't given us the information yet. I have requested it, but I haven't received it yet.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Next item on the agenda is board member comments. Do we have any comments in relation to what the public has shared with us at this time? Mr. Dockett?
I know, but I wanted to ask a couple of questions. I haven't heard anything about, you know, we voted on looking at the handbook. I haven't heard anything about it. It's been months and months and months.
What are you, employee handbook?
Yeah.
Okay.
Nothing's been done about it. I believe that eight weeks vacation for somebody who starts working at the township the first, from the first day, gets eight weeks paid vacation, you know, that's pretty hard to find that out in the real world. So, I would think, I know we picked out three people to be on this, but no one's ever done anything about it, so I'm just wondering if we ever are going to. And I'd like to know about, did we charge Don Lupai the $1,800 that we paid by mistake? Does anybody know about that?
I can respond to that, Mr. Dockett?
Thank you.
So, I've been in contact with Mr. Lupai. He's asked for information that I now have, and I will be sending out a letter to him about the $1,811.56.
Thank you. That's it?
That's it? Okay, great. Ms. Belliger.
I just want to say, I started with a Happy New Year. I'm glad that we have made it around the summer more time, and we are beginning another wonderful year. I do want to add, just that Dockett brought up something I don't want to forget about, so I thought I'd bring another voice to that. There was a committee formed to work on this employee handbook. I don't know if anything's come of that or not. It may be suggested that perhaps a different committee may need to be formed in order to get this worked on, or maybe the whole board as a whole can work on this if it needs it. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Otto.
Okay, I can speak on the personnel handbook. We did meet several times. We did bring several different policies to the board to work on, but because of other priorities, it got pushed to the wayside. So, in my situation, and I can only speak to that, is I do work an hour away now as opposed to working locally, so to have meetings in the morning and in the evening are very challenging. So, if somebody wants, somebody else on the board wants to take my place on that committee, they're more than welcome to.
Okay.
As far as, and then I wanted to also say, as far as the Kiwanis, I do want to send out appreciation to the Ocho Brothers that own Poli's. They have, like Margaret said, have been very, very generous to the Kiwanis, supported us through the whole thing. Without them, we wouldn't even been a viable store. So, I send my appreciation to them.
Did they charge for that?
Pardon me?
Did they charge rent for that building?
Yes, we did, we did pay rent.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any more comments?
I guess if I can just address, as being part of the Personnel Committee too, and again, time constraints, but when we did our priority list, it wasn't one of the top rankings on the priority, so maybe we can re-discuss that to see where it's going to fall on the list of priorities and who can take that over.
We voted on it, so that's why it wasn't on there. We voted to do the-
Right.
We had a vote.
Right.
So, that's why it shouldn't have to be on there. Excuse me, but I don't feel that it had to be on there, because we already decided to work.
Okay. Well, we might have to revisit the Personnel Committee, that it is going to work on it.
Yeah.
Yeah, we did, we did already have that in the works. It was one of the items that we really didn't even consider on that list, because it was already being worked on.
Okay.
Already assumed to be working on. Thanks.
Yeah, I can say there's a great deal been done with it. It just hasn't come back before this board yet, and, you know, and if, we did have some challenges getting together with the three of us because, you know, of time constraints. So, if Ms. Otto doesn't feel she has time to be considered on it anymore, if any other board members would like to volunteer for that, or if just, you know, Kathy and I could work with Mr. Ains. We started it before Mr. Ains came on, and now that he's here, you know, he could, he can certainly help us with that also. But if any other board members would like to join the group for the discussion, that would be totally fine. So, just let us know. Okay. Ms. Zelenak.
First of all, I'd like to wish everybody a Happy New Year, and also I would like to thank the community for their support of the Kiwanis store. I think it has been a good asset to the community, has been kind of a meeting place, and I'd like to thank Mary and Margaret, two of our members, who have put their heart and soul in the store to make it very viable, and all the members of Kiwanis who have supported when they could. And that's, I think it's a good thing to keep it going. And I would like to also thank the Poli's for their support in letting us have that facility as long as we've had it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more? Okay, moving on, correspondence and announcements. Do we have any, anything that any of the board members would like to bring forward at this time?
I can say that I sent out to all the board an invitation to join me at a Redevelopment Ready Communities program in Lansing on January 25, and it's an all-day session put on by the MEDC, the Michigan Economic Development Corporation, and I'll be attending, and Mr. Ains will be going also, so I think that will be really helpful. I've invited several members of the DDA and the Planning Commission, so hopefully there will be a, at least a small contingent of us going there and seeing what we can learn and seeing how we can apply it to our township. So, just wanted to make that announcement. Oh, and the other one, there is going to be, this is, this is going to be challenging for me to get back for that. At 5:00 in Ypsilanti, they're going to be talking about how they have redeveloped their downtown, and it's at the Ypsy Ale House, starting at 5:00. There's going to be a walking tour of Ypsilanti, and I'd like to go to both of them. I don't know how I'll manage to do that at this point, but it will be, it'll be really interesting, because I've seen Ypsilanti in hard times, and I'd like to see how they're doing today, so. Anyway, so that's available also to the, to the board and the community.
Bring your long johns.
Great.
I am planning to go to the one in Ypsilanti.
And what date was that again?
The 25th.
Thank you. Yep, January 25. I've sent both of those out to the board, so, you know, I'll be interested to hear what all of you bring back from that. Okay, moving on, we have a ZBA. Do you have a ZBA report, Ms. Otto?
There was no meeting for the month of December. There is supposed to be a meeting for the month of January, and I think that it's going, we usually meet on the third Monday, but that is a holiday, so I'm thinking that we're going to do it on the 22nd.
Okay. Thank you. Planning Commission report?
The Planning Commission has not met since our last board meeting, but on our December 6 meeting, I don't know if this got into the last meeting that I did not get to attend here.
Didn't Ms. Otto read it for you, a report?
There was one item that was missing, though I think is important for the community to know as well as the board. One item of discussion was a suggestion that a commissioner be present at meetings with an applicant. After some commentary from the commissioners, it was unanimously agreed that it was not a good practice, as it could be perceived as a conflict. It could be seen as collusion or favoritism or influence. Since the Planning Commission is recommending commission to the board, further, and having some discussion as well, not at that meeting, but with the Planning Chair, I'd like to propose that this board consider that we follow the same policy. We have a manager, a zoning administrator, a planning, and Amazing Mary Bird, who have all the information and ability to work with applicants and carry them through the process without the presence of board members or, members or a member that could have the appearance of collusion, favoritism, or influence, since board members vote on approving or denying. The application process is an administrative function and does not need board member influence. This policy would apply to any development proposal or project, or any meetings that would, they would have, or negotiations with a developer. So, I will be bringing that forward as well at one of our meetings.
Okay, thank you. Planning Commission, okay. Parks and Rec.
Yeah, we had a meeting in December. A couple of things came up of interest. They circled around the dog park. We were asked if it's possible, if any chance to enforce any of the dog park rules. The two main issues that have come up at the dog park is open alcohol, and the other is handlers bringing multiple dogs, where there is specified a two-dog limit per handler. We understand it's school property, so the open alcohol should be addressed, at least from that regards. So, this was something that came up. I had a constituent come out to our Parks and Rec meeting with, these are the main two issues, and I was asked to contact township here, and I did send a letter to manager, Mr. Ains, and I believe I sent one maybe to our chair as well. But this was right after that meeting, so it's been a couple of weeks since I did that. So, the next meeting is February 15, where I suspect we'll probably begin discussion about the community garden, because that will be coming soon. And that's all I have right now.
Okay, thank you. Land Preservation Committee.
In your package is that our next meeting is this Thursday, January 11. The Land Preservation Committee is working on a conversation on land preservation for our February 8 meeting. The purpose is to have our residents and local experts join together to have conversations on the benefits of land preservation. We are working on a poster that was put in to the packages, our draft, and we'll be finalizing that at our February 8 meeting. Also, Ms. Otto and I did meet on the changing and updating the bylaws. We did that, so I will be presenting that to the Land Preservation Committee as well.
Great, thank you. The next item is the Financial Treasurer's report, and that's in your packet. Do you have any comments you'd like to make about that?
The report required by the Public Act 20 is the financial report, which shows our bank balances as well as the investments. We did have a CD come due that was reinvested with Morgan Stanley Tuesday. So, and we do have a, we did have a CD that came due from First National, and working with Morgan Stanley, right now there really wasn't a lot of CDs available, so we'll probably, we'll look again on Thursday to reinvest that.
Is that all? That's funny, but-
That's all I care if there's any specific questions.
Yeah, I had a question. What, what bank are we with?
We are still with First National Bank of How.
Okay, thank you.
I know the lawyers are working on reviewing the contracts for Huntington.
Fund Balance Report.
I have one.
Do you have anything? Oh, go ahead, Mr. Dockett.
If I'm not lying, tell me, but I, I see in here on that there's a, I'm going to say $10,000, because it's $9,960, in the rental income on Barker. So, my question is, when, if they take over this building, do they get this $10,000?
Which building is that, Mr. Dockett?
75 Barker.
If, who takes it over?
One's.
Oh, no. Not at all.
What, what happens?
We're, the Kiwanis is just asking if we could use the fire bay of 75 Barker.
Oh, excuse me, oh, I, okay, I'm sorry. I guess the Downtown Development's going to take it over.
Potentially.
I misspoke.
Okay.
So, my, my question is, what happens to this money? Does it go to the Downtown Development Corporation? Does anyone know, or has anybody thought about it?
No. I think, actually, I was thinking the same thing when we get to that, is how will that be handled? My personal thought is that it should all stay with the township.
Okay, something happened to the mic.
I said, I was thinking the same thing when we get to that discussion of what's, you know, how would that funds be handled?
We're going to do that tonight.
I think so.
Yeah, well, I'm-
It's on the agenda.
Yeah, well, I'm concerned about that. And that's it for that, but I do have something on the fund balance.
Okay, thank you. The next item is the Supervisors' Report, which you've all been able to read.
What about the fund balance?
Oh, the fund balance. What question do you have?
Do you have a question?
Yes.
Oh, yes.
What is the fund balance?
Well, the fund balance, so the number that I go by, because it is, I think, takes more comprehensive, is if you look at it, is the 217-18 amended budget. That is doing all our projected revenues as our projected expenses. This does not reflect the updates that we plan on doing tonight to do the amended fund balance. So, based on that, I believe it will be closer to 74 percent. So, the thing on fund balance is it's always a point in time, and it is trying to depict the most accurate point in time, and I think probably we should make sure we do our budget amendments more on a quarterly basis, so that would be, give us a better projected.
Well, I think you're saying that, but I have been interested in this monthly, and I think it's important, because we're so far out of line.
Right.
But this is 51 percent.
Correct.
Well, and on the township managers, this is 74 or something.
Right.
So, that's, I mean, let's see, what we can do about this.
So, again, a fund balance is at a point in time, and we have not made our budget adjustments yet, and when we do make that, that will reflect the increased revenue, and some of a, and that should, that will bring us up to a 74 percent.
Well, yes, but until I start asking about it, when I start asking about it, there was no problem. You told me what it was each month. Now, all of a sudden, you don't want to tell me what it is each month.
You can, you can have the report each month, and I-
Well, I'd like to have a report that I understand.
We can work on that, if you want to tell me what would be more beneficial.
Well, what would be more beneficial is like I see here- Well, what would be more beneficial is like I see here, that says 51 percent. So, that's what I would like to see. You can, you can, you know, change it around all you want, but I just want the facts.
That's where -- you're welcome. That's where given facts.
Okay. Okay, we're done with that. Okay, the Supervisor's report is next, and I've written it out for you. My recommendation is that we look forward to it, we looked into the future to improve our business climate, and that this board place a priority on that. And so, that's the gist of my report. Anyone have any questions? Ms. Bellinger?
I got a comment. I like the paragraph, "Another important improvement for businesses and developers would be to consider eliminating the fee for an initial concept meeting." If you had some good idea in here, I'd like that, someone to point it out.
But I thought we already agreed that the concept meeting, they should have a free concept meeting, or at least the first one should be free.
We should put that into our fee schedule, however. And so, one of the next meetings, I'd like to take a look at our fee schedule, you know, for the Planning Commission, and I think that would be important to write that in there, at least for a period of time, so that we can see what the benefit would be of that. And I believe we've actually had, didn't we have a recent meeting that we didn't charge a fee for the concept meeting, Mr. Ains?
Right. Since the board indicated you didn't want to charge for the initial, we've had two or three of those that we have not charged for. But we're going based on the motion by the board, and Supervisor brought to my attention that the fee schedule, actually should spell it out, and so that's what we're looking at modifying, is to reflect that the first time would be no fee, and then after that, there would be other fees involved.
So, at the point where they're coming for concept meetings, is that we're scheduling that when the zoning administrator is here, so that she can meet with them as well? Is that how, that we're trying to do it?
Yeah, we're trying to make it so we have those meetings on Wednesday morning, when she's scheduled to be here. And the last one, we were successful in being able to have her present and meet with the party, and so that lowered our cost.
Yep. But that does cost the township some funds, anyway. I mean, it lowers our cost, but when we have Mr. Lippens in, you know, we have fees for Mr. Lippens' time, but that we are just eating instead of passing along to the applicant. However, the advantage of that is the turnaround, if we get businesses actually citing in the township, we will be able to recover those fees with the future projects, you know, with the planner fees, as the projects come in and move through the Planning Commission stages. So, anyway, we do need to look at those at a future meeting and relatively soon. So, Mr. Dockett?
I would say this is the best report that you ever put out. I'm very happy with it.
Thank you.
The second paragraph, down about five or six lines, where you said, let me see, it's one, two. The third paragraph, one line under the third, the start of it, says, "We need to find appropriate zoning properties for businesses." I, like I said, like, this is scary for me to read this, because it makes sense. But what we need to do is get the properties zoned properly for businesses. We don't have to have the businesses looking for it. So, that's one way that I would like to improve this. But thank you very much.
Thank you. We are going to have the DDA taking a look at some of the businesses. Well, we are. The DDA is interested in this, and so they want to take a look at the types of businesses that we're locating in the different zoning districts in the township, and making a recommendation potentially to Mr. Lippens and the Planning Commission to also take a look at them and see if any adjustments need to be made. We have some areas master planned for certain types of businesses that they're not, the underlying zoning doesn't match that, and I believe we can do some things like that to improve those areas for the businesses that are citing here, making it easier. So, those are, those are the kind of things I'm interested in, those are the kind of things I ran on, and those are the kind of things that are going to make this township move forward. So, I do want us to put a priority on that, funding-wise and activity-wise, of this board as we move forward in 2018. Ms. Chick, you have a question?
No, I just wanted to comment that those are the kind of things that the Planning Commission has been interested for as long as I can remember. We've always been working on getting, attempting to get the best zoning for the area, and it's not easy. And we've gone over, we've done many amendments, and Mr. -- I know Mr. Lippens has worked with us, and previous planners have worked with us, so it's a project, but we'll get there, hopefully. And I just have one more comment on the Supervisor's report. I know we talked about this, I think, last year, or even at the previous board, that because the Supervisor oversees the assessing department, that should we get some kind of a quarterly report from the assessors on what they're doing? I know we've asked for it before, but I don't know how would, do we decide as a board that we want to have that quarterly? What would be the...
To see what kind of activity they're doing.
Yes.
Yes, a lot of that is coming up relatively soon. They go out on a regular basis, field trips, and make sure our assessments match. So, I know they've been out to my house multiple times, but anyway, that's a good idea. We'll see if we can get a quarterly report done.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Okay, the next item is Mr. Ains, the Manager's Report. Go ahead, Mr. Ains.
Thank you. Actually, I try to keep it to one page, but the first page is actually what I gave you last month, just changed the date, and that's because of the detail I went in talking about the budget amendments. Since you postponed or tabled those at the last meeting, I thought it was important for you to have my comments again for this evening. So, I'd like to focus on the second page, which is new items. And just a couple of things. One is, the board has been setting goals, and we are looking at, you know, what your priorities are, and trying to see how we can expedite those. We'll talk about that a little bit later, under one of the line items on the agenda. The Code Enforcement and Zoning Office, those two individuals are working together very well, and that's where we were talking about the Wednesdays, that the zoning administrator is here each Wednesday, the Code Enforcement Officer is here Mondays and Wednesdays. So, we're trying to overlap, so that we get the best use of their time. And also, I found that they seem to work very well on some of our problem cases, taking both approaches. How's it fit with zoning? How's it fit with code enforcement? The SOL grant that was awarded to the township some time ago, I did get the official final signed agreement in December, signed by the Director, MDQ, and another one of the state agencies. And it does tell us that we can go back to 213 with any expenses we've incurred. So, we have some engineering documentation. Dan is also working on time and material for people and our equipment, and when we get that together, we'll be submitting a request for reimbursement. So, basically, the first 10 percent is our match, but once we've reached that area, everything else we do, we get reimbursed 100 percent for. So, we're looking forward to that, and that'll add to the super fund. In addition to that, it gives you three years to complete the grant from going forward. So, you have until December of 2020 to complete that project. So, it is moving ahead. Dan's working with me, as well as several of the people in the finance area, and the deputy clerk with getting information to the consultant, so he can do some of the studies that are required as part of that grant. And we emailed a number of those things again today over to him. I did want to point out that the Supervisor has asked that the board bring up any questions that you have in advance to shorten these meetings. And I did want to thank Mr. Dockett for talking with me yesterday about his concern over the fund balance. I do appreciate that very much. What I've put on your desk today is a memo that is fairly short, but the second page is a section of the finance report. And when I was making the comments about the percentage that you have as fund balance, that was based on the discussion with the auditors, that once the budget amendments were adopted, you would be at that 74 percent figure. And a large part of that is because of the way they allocated the expenses and the revenues for the non-motorized path. So, as a result of that, that's why there's a difference. So, it's, it's like the Treasurer had mentioned, it's like taking a photograph, and the Treasurer takes a photograph each month of what the fund balance is. What I was referring to was, if you adopt the budget amendments tonight, then the fund balance, according to the auditors, would be at the 74 percent level. Therefore, you've gone a long ways towards accomplishing your goal of getting to 80 percent, or he's recommended now 100 percent. So, there is progress being made that way, man. So, that was the reason there may have been some confusion over which number was correct. Mine is the one after the board takes action today. If you do so, the Treasurer's is what it was at that point in time when she was reporting on it. So, that's all I had tonight at this point.
Thank you. Mr. Dockett?
You said the front page, the first page, was something you turned in last month, but on that page is where it says 75 percent, 74 percent. So, you said that's the same page. I wasn't here for the last meeting.
Yeah. That first page was from my report last month. Then what you asked me about was why I was talking 74 percent fund balance, and the Treasurer had been talking a much lower number, and that's what I was just referring to. I put another report on your desk tonight.
I don't read them when I, after I get to the meeting, because it's too confusing. I need to study things. I got to have stuff on Thursday. So, you can put all the stuff on this desk you want. I don't look at it, oh, my God.
Well, I tried to read it.
Because it's too difficult to try to vote on things at the last minute. Like, last night at 4:00, I get this information about this lease. Well, that doesn't give us much time, and it's done continuously. You guys always do it. And I mean, it's pretty evident what's going on. You don't want to give us time to study stuff, from what I can understand. So, anyway, the $25,000, one, two, three, the fourth dot down on the front page, $25,000 general fund, from the fire, back to the fire fund. Was that done a month ago, or was that done recently?
No, the amendments that were not adopted last meeting, they were carried over to this meeting.
Okay, so this was not on last month, the $25,000?
It was on last month, but the board tabled it.
Oh, okay, thank you. It's clear, I understand.
One other thing I'd mention, though, is that I have been trying to avoid giving you last-minute items, but Mr. Dockett asked me the question yesterday, so I was trying to be quick in responding and not wait till next month to get an answer on his question from yesterday.
What question was that?
You asked me why my number on the fund balance was different.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
And that's why I got this out today.
And I appreciate that, thank you. But because when I look at hers, it's like 25 points different, so...
Yes.
It's confusing, thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, I understand.
Ms. Bellinger?
I have a question on, since it's on here, I'm going to bring it up now. The first bullet point says, "Auditors adjusted state revenue, shared revenue, LCSa, to reflect this split to millage, the 40,000." Now, I'm learning a little bit about that. I understand, is it split perhaps three ways? So, this is a double question, is it, how many ways is it split? And I understand that last year, we also had this. Now, was this divvied out last year?
It was.
It was, okay. And is it divided out between three? Is it the police and fire and the general fund?
All of the millages, all of the, you know, the general fund has a millage, police has a millage, and fire has a millage, so it got developed, divided up. And there's another millage, bond millage, too, that I saw. So, anyway, it should be divided up amongst the millages at that, and prorated that way. That's my understanding from the controller.
All right. Thanks.
That's why you see some of the amendments in here coming up.
Okay, yeah, I was, when I heard that this had come up last year, I was worried that perhaps it wasn't allocated.
Well, we, there was a misunderstanding in how it needed to be allocated, because I was new, and the controller was new, so now we're correcting that.
Okay, thank you.
And if I may add, too, that was a new item from the state, and there were many municipalities that were asking questions of the MTA and the MTTA of, what do we do with it? And then when the auditors came, it became, you know, obvious what we needed to do with it, but it was not clear. In fact, you get, sometimes in the mail, you get a check. It's a check, State of Michigan. You're like, what's this for? And really, you have to go research it. It doesn't say, this is for the, you know, based on this vote, LCSa, you know, split it amongst millage. It's just a check, literally a check. So, you have to investigate it, so we're a lot wiser now.
Thank you. Yeah, it was a... Good. Some questions, thanks.
Okay. Anyone else?
Okay, I have one.
Okay, go ahead.
So, Mr. Ains, in your goal-setting item in the last, are we all set as a board? Because it says this is the final ranking of, is this the final rankings of potential goals and the assignment of responsibility by the board, or is any further discussion work needed on this? So, do we need to do anything more at this point in time?
I understood that you had adopted those at the last meeting, subject to any future changes you might want to make to it. But my understanding was that was what we were supposed to work off of.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure, thanks.
Ms. Chick?
And just in regard to the goals, we do have our ranking of the goals, and I want to make sure I understand that because there was a comment made that we have to work on our priorities first, of other issues come up, we're not, everything else is not a distraction. I mean, that we're just concerned with these items first, and we're going to handle those first, and nothing else is going to be on the agenda as a priority.
Well, it's the pleasure of the board, really, on how we work, but this was, we, these are the rankings that we came up to, was up with as a group.
Right.
And there's only so many hours in a day. I mean, there's, you know, we only have so much staff. So, if something is a certain priority, and you start throwing things in there that really aren't a priority, you...
And whose opinion, that's what I'm...
Right, and this is as, this is what the board decided as a whole, you know, point-wise. So, we're attempting to handle multiple of these, you know, like 10, 12, you know. But in six months or a year, we could, you know, reprioritize them as we get them taken care of. And as you see, some things are in progress, in process, and some things are done. So, it, and our priorities will change over the years as we make progress on certain things. So, all I can say is, there's only so many hours in a day, and when you dump a lot of stuff on just a few individuals, you know, you really are making the choice to not cover some things that may be a higher priority. So, it is this board's purview to decide that, and...
No, I understand. My question is, we have our top five, hopefully get to top the 10, if we get that far, is that if anything else comes up before we complete those five or 10, that we are not going to discuss it at all at board meetings?
Well, how late do you want our board meetings to go? I mean, that's, that's kind of the thing.
Okay.
And we can, we can talk about changing, maybe in three or four months, we add items and reprioritize. I'm not opposed to discussing other things, but we need to plan for it in our board meetings and do it smartly. and do it smartly. So that's, that's my only comment with that. Mr. Ames?
Just one comment, and I realize this is not just for my goals, it's for the goals of the board on all issues, but in my contract, it says you'll annually decide on goals in July, in that month, as to what I should be working on for the coming year. So that gives you an opportunity to reexamine it if you choose to do so.
So where are we? I guess we're here at the agenda items, pardon? Minutes, bills, okay, let's start with the minutes. Anybody have minutes, comments, changes? Mr. Dockett?
Oh, our minutes, no.
No, okay. We're on minutes. Anyone have a change on the minutes?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead, Ms. Elnach.
It's very minor. It's on the second page, I believe. Second page, item five, the last paragraph, there's like an eight in front of it for Chief Wagner.
Yep.
Page two?
Yeah.
Section five, at the bottom, just, there's a little eight in front of Chief Wagner's number, or name.
Okay, great. And there's one more typo I'll just point out to Ms. Lumbel later. It's fine. Okay, anyone, other, any other changes? Okay, can I have a motion to adopt the minutes as amended?
Wait, I'd like to say one thing about.
Okay.
I wasn't here, but on 13, on 13 page three. Someone was very nice to me when I was on vacation, and said I was gone, and I could make my choices when I returned.
Okay.
It says, "Dockett was not included in the information, and was agreed that he can provide preferences when he returns."
Please do.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, I move to adopt the minutes as amended.
Support.
Motion by Chocley, support by Belliger. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? No, okay, thank you. The next item is the bills. Which one, Mr. Dockett, all of them, or?
Well, no, I only have one.
Well, there's, there's open and paid, and there's.
Well, open, I, I'm on paid. Open, open means we're not paying them yet, right?
We're hoping to pay the opens tonight, you know.
Oh, well, I don't, I don't have enough. I got it from, I got it yesterday at 4:00, but I didn't realize that they wanted, it said open. We never pay the opens.
Well, we adopt the, these at this meeting, and they're paid the next day.
It's fine, but I don't have them.
Okay.
The opens, I don't have.
You don't have any issues, okay.
Well, I don't have, I may have, but they said open, so I didn't expect us to pay them. How was I going to know that we're going to pay them?
Open means not paid, paid means paid already.
Oh, yeah, right.
Okay, okay.
Well, the ones I got last night said open. That's what it said on them.
Did we get different ones last night?
Some of you.
Jared and Lael sent some, she added some new ones on there that he.
Oh, okay, okay.
It's fine, go ahead and pay them if you want.
Okay, I'm sorry.
We're going to have to pay them sooner or later, but I don't have them, but I want to talk about.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Dockett.
All right. Oh, page one, about the fourth one up from the bottom. Overhead and ornamental. Lights on the birds, I guess that is. Is that for one month, or is this the total bill? I thought we agreed we were going to pay half, and Green Oaks are going to pay half. So was it 6,000, or was it 3,000? And is it for a month, or is it forever? I mean, we got to pay it forever. I voted no on it, but this board passed us to pay for these lights. And this is just as electric bill, this doesn't say anything about the lights. At $3,000, folks, $3,319. I'd like to know what that's all about.
I suspect it's streetlights, Mr. Dockett.
Well, it says ornamental.
Well, who knows? We have odd names for all sorts of things, but I suspect it's the streetlights.
Well, I'd like to find out about that.
Okay, we'll find out about that.
Page, I don't see a page.
Streetlights, yeah.
What page is this? I don't know. Payroll.
What page is that?
Code enforcement, I don't know what page it is.
Is there a page number down there?
Page.
It's the page, it's the page.
It'd be for page 13.
It'd be page, it'd be for 13. Second one down.
Yes, page 12.
Code.
Code enforcement salary.
Yeah.
Uh-huh.
What is that doing under code enforcement? Why, why is that under?
Building department.
It's under building department, and we're paying our code enforcement officer from the building department fund currently.
Well, but I don't think this is legal.
We're looking into that, Mr. Dockett.
Well, I mean, these, the people that are paying for building permits shouldn't be paying $536, what is it, $538 for a code enforcement officer, because I happen to know the state law says you cannot do that. So I, I don't know how long we've been doing it, but it doesn't fall under building, in my opinion.
Okay, we're looking into that, Mr. Dockett.
Or if we are going to do it, I'd like to have a letter from our attorney saying that this is legal.
Yes, actually, my understanding is the building official had one opinion, the auditors had a different opinion, so it was given to the attorneys, and I reminded them today with an email that we wanted a written opinion.
Well, we don't have it now.
Not unless you brought it with you.
Well, if we, well, but I would like to have a copy of it.
Yes, when I receive it in writing, I'll pass it along to the board.
Not, not notes from you. I want the copy from the attorney.
I understand.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Yes.
All right. The next question is for the sewer department. Oh, it's the same one, it's the same page. On the top of that page, it says, excuse me, just a minute, I think it's just right there. There's the code enforcement. What page number is that?
14.
15?
14. Page 14.
Page 14, nearly the bottom. Sewer overtime. Well, the payroll for the supervisor, the superintendent is 2,500 bucks. I'm just writing it down, a month, or two weeks, whatever it is. I guess it's every two weeks. And then the rest of the crew, there's four more guys, that's 7,126 dollars. Sewer overtime, $3,142 in three weeks? That seems like quite a bit of money. Can you explain that to me?
Yeah, I can explain that. Our guys bank their overtime, they don't take the pay.
Excuse me?
Our guys bank their overtime, they do not take the pay every two weeks. Like, if they accumulate overtime in a week, they do not take the pay that week. They accumulate it. And for some of the guys, they, they save some of their overtime for Christmas to help pay for their Christmas.
Well, but, but I looked at your other part of your paperwork, and it's pretty much the same every, every payday, isn't it?
Yeah.
Well, it seems like a $10,000, your, your, your complete bill is $10,000 a month, and to have a third of that more in overtime seems like a lot of hours.
Well, the overtime is accumulated before it was paid, and one of the guys took 50 hours of overtime that he'd accumulate over a period of time. Yeah, and they, we have the option of doing our overtime weekly or.
Well, I seen this, I, why is a third of their, of their payroll?
Yeah, it looks like we had a bad week, doesn't it?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Is that all, Mr. Dockett?
That's all for the.
Okay, that's all for the bills? Did anyone else have questions on the bills?
No, no, I have one more, yes, but I'd like to know, you said that I couldn't, that I had to tell you ahead of time, but I don't have anything for the fire department, so I want to ask one more question for, for the sewer department.
Okay.
On your, on this page here, it says that Tom Beats, how do you say his name?
Beert.
Beert, or Bert, whatever.
He quit.
Yes.
But he quit on 12/1. Now, most people would quit on the last day of the month. Now, does he quit on 12/1 because he gets insurance for the rest of the month, or he gets another vacation, or?
He quit, he quit on the last day of the pay period.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It looked fishy, I was concerned.
Okay. Any, any more questions about the paid bills? No, okay.
We're on reports.
We're on reports now, okay. And the only ones, well, we had fire report and sewer.
We have to make a motion to accept.
I don't have anything.
If we're done with the, with the bills, yes, let's make a motion to accept the bills. Did you want to make that motion, Ms. Otto?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to accept the bills, the fire department report, the sewer report, and whatever report did we have in here? No, no, that's it? Just the bills, right?
Just the bills. We're just doing the bills.
Or you're going to do it all separate?
We don't, well, we don't have to approve reports.
Just the paid bills. Did we have to, did we do the?
We should do all the bills.
Okay. All the bills.
Okay, so Ms. Otto has made a motion to approve all the bills.
I'll second.
And Ms. Manley will second that. Do we have any more discussion? All, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'd like to have a roll.
Okay, roll call vote, please, Ms. Manley.
Chek?
Yes.
Otto?
Yes, Manley, yes. Chocley?
Yes.
Bellach?
Yes.
Dockett?
No.
Belliger?
Yes.
I voted no, because I don't have them, that's the only reason I'm.
Okay, that passes. Okay, 6-1, do we have anything?
Madam Supervisor, if I may briefly.
Yes, go ahead.
Just because this issue was just raised, I just wanted to be clear, I just checked with Mr. Burns by text. The issue of the code enforcement officer has not been referred to us previously, so we're not reminded of it today. We were given it the first time today. We're more than happy to look into it if the board would like for us to look into it.
Okay. Thank you.
We'll try and have that prepared for next meeting.
Okay, great, thank you very much.
And I apologize, I thought it was given to him before, and I was just reinforcing it, so.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, let's see, so, fire, do we have any, any comment?
I, I may have missed that, fire.
Well, I have something on fire, so I didn't have to poll it, because you polled it.
Yeah, you could do that, right?
Go ahead, Ms. Elnach.
So on the streetlights, so thank you for reporting that. So if people don't know, if you have a, if you find a streetlight that we don't see off, please report it to the office, and Chief has been handling and calling DTE to make sure they get fixed. And then, so about the lights in front of the, of the building, do you need a motion to get that approved? How does that work? Are we, are you asking or just telling us?
I really just put it, I don't know if I need it approved, I put it out there in case you were opposed to it. I think they need to be fixed. Actually, I think that they need to be fixed, and I think Tammy has one at the community center that needs to be repaired, so.
I was just wondering if you were just, yes, the purpose of that.
The purpose of that was if you're opposing it, then let me know, but I think you want them repaired.
Yeah.
We'll probably have to wait till spring or something that gets a little warmer. The problem we're having with those is they're, they can't get those heads off. The way they were designed and built, they, with the two different metals, everything is stripping out when they try to take it out, and then they can't put it back in, so they need to be replaced.
Should we replace them with something different? Is that the plan?
It's something similar, but different, and it'll be.
So that we don't encounter this issue?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you. And again, if you have a streetlight, you know, report it to the township, and Bill's, Chief's been handling it.
I do have one more that went out, I've noticed, in the last week, in front of Harbor Cove that I'll be reporting, so.
Okay, and there are numbers on the poles, I believe, that would be helpful in locating them if they're reported?
And you, you can also report them directly to DTE, we do out of our own subdivision. Right.
Okay. My question about the bollards is, they're not exactly beautiful, and do they throw very much light? And what about if we just took them out and put something else out there?
That's.
If we need, if, I mean, a floodlight or something to eliminate the sidewalk, is that the issue?
That's why they're there, I'm sure, but that's up to the board. I mean, if you want me to look into something different.
I, I don't know.
Leave the Christmas tree lights.
I.
I just wonder if there's something more cost-effective and useful, because those are kind of ugly, in my opinion, but, anyway.
You don't want to ask me to design, or, I'm not an architect, I don't decorate my own Christmas tree, I don't, so I'll, I'll take direction from what the board wants to do, though.
Okay, I'd hate to pour any more money into those things, that's all. So I'm just wondering if there's more, something that's more useful, and maybe our planner would know off the top of his head.
High maintenance?
Well, they're hard to replace, the bulbs, and I guess they can't, it's hard to get parts, and they're, they're so old at this point. Something newer might be more, might be less expensive, too.
I'll see what, we've been using O'Donnell Electric across the street, and so I'll see if they have any recommendations on things that they have done in a similar situation.
Great idea. Okay, thank you. Okay. Police. Any, oh, do you have a fire issue that you want to?
I do not.
No, okay.
I do.
Police, go ahead.
Last page, very back page, second from the bottom to the right, there's four zeros in a row, and it says others. I'm wondering if that is when we quit paying Mr. Green.
I, I'm not positive, I'll check on that and get back with you, but that, it appears that that's what that could be, but.
Yeah, okay, so, and if we got, this is not on here, but.
I'll, I'll talk to you after the meeting.
How we talking, how we doing with Mr. Green?
Okay.
All right, so you're going to check on this?
Yep.
Thank you very much.
Okay, anymore? I guess that's it for the reports. I guess I would like to let our department heads go at this time, if they'd like to leave.
Adios.
Thank you, thank you very much. Thank you, thank you very much. Okay. Continuing to move on to the agenda items now. Our first real, I mean, first item here is the McKenna proposal for the master plan review and the zoning ordinance amendments. The board had some questions about how the funding was going to be allocated if we do the budget amendment in the next agenda item. And there was some talk about whether the RFP was included in what McKenna already had planned for the planning department. So the RFP, the cost of the RFP was going to come out of what we had already set aside, the forty thousand dollars. So I'm leaving this to the board to ask their questions. And Mr. Lippens is here to answer them tonight. Mr. Ains, did you have anything you'd like to do to lead this along?
Well, this came up as part of the budget amendments. There was a question about the base amount that's in the budget that's not being amended, being forty thousand. And then there was a question about doing the master plan and splitting that between two years. And I believe that was at twenty-five thousand a year. And then there was a question about ten thousand for handling the RFP. As I recalled it, that was a question asked by the board at a prior meeting as to whether that was included in the base amount. So I thought it'd be best if Mr. Lippens came and instead of going through me, directly discussed it with the board. But the question then would come to, do you include it in the budget amendment or don't you? That'd be your discretion.
Okay.
So if I may add, on the RFP, and I talked to Mr. Lippens today, is at the joint meeting with the Board of Trustees and the Planning Commission on October 24th, I asked the question if I recall that the RFP time and process is being funded through the current contract with you, and is that correct? And Mr. Lippens responded, yes, we are working under the planning budget to do this, correct. So therefore, I mean, I thought I recalled that. I was actually impressed that I did.
Good.
So, so anyway, and I did. So my understanding is when we did the RFP that it was going to be included under our current contract with McKenna.
Ms. Bellinger?
I concur with what trustee Zelnak, or actually, what our treasurer, Zelnak, said. I actually was curious, and I did review the video to find indeed, about forty-nine and a half minutes into our meeting, the question was asked and working under planning budget to do this was the reply. So this is the reason, the main reason I approved the RFP. Because not only do I want to see something done, but it was going to be within the forty thousand dollars allocated for McKenna. So this is, I would, you know, I believe that I can trust, I can trust you, Mr. Lippens, to exercise great care and thriftiness to work within this existing budget.
Make sure it's turned on and put it very close to your mouth.
Hello. All right, yeah, this is absolutely true. The question was asked, we are working under the planning budget. And there was even some debate as we were doing the budget for this year as to whether or not we should mine item this funds. How much should we budget? And, you know, at that time, we did not budget for the master plan or zoning amendments. But I believe the annual allotment for planning was increased from thirty-five thousand dollars to forty thousand dollars. The, when we started the process, and I think there may have been other meetings when I was asked this question, too. But the meeting we're talking about, when that question was asked, my response was verbatim, we are working under the planning budget. Which is what all of our work is done under the planning budget. And it covers a lot of things. In some of the discussion tonight, it was mentioned that we want to increase the level of services to applicants, do pre-application meetings for free, you know, the types of meetings when I'm here. These are all things that we do under general planning services. So what I was doing was an analysis overall of our budget. And if we were on track to come in on forty thousand dollars. Which is certainly my intent, that's what I would like to do. When I was looking at the analysis, it wasn't panning out like that. So anytime, you know, we look at the budget, we're going to come back to the board and say, here's where we are. And when we can make decisions to be more frugal, to make sure that we make, we can make adjustments to the scope so that we stay under that amount. So, you know, my effort is to report to the board to make sure that we're transparent in how we go about executing budgets and to, you know, do good project management to stay on budget. I know that there's an interest in increasing some of the base level of services to residents, improving customer relations, improving township processes. And so there's been, pardon me, there's been a few things during this time that have come up as new priorities, too. You know, that being said, I would have no issue if the board decides not to act on this particular item. We can report back at a later date and do our best to stay under that forty thousand dollars.
I think that would be very appreciated.
So, yeah, I think that, I think that that would be fine if that was the preference. And I'm happy to continue reporting on expenditures on this and other planning projects, too. I know that the agenda item on the master plan and zoning ordinance was actually item number one. But if there's no questions on that, I was pleased to hear earlier that the zoning and master plan process remain a priority to the board, so...
So I do have a...
Go ahead, Ms. Zelnak.
So, and again, you and I had this conversation earlier, but for our public and as well as maybe the rest of the board, could you, again, tell us what is covered in the contract and what would be considered extra out of the forty thousand? So we have a forty thousand dollar contract.
The planning budget covers anything that is not an applicant-based fee. So a lot of the services that the township does are paid for by the people that generate the need for those services through applications. So if you have a project that requires planning review, planning commission review, board approval, you pay an application fee. And that fee is generally, it's used to cover the expense so that the township and general taxpayers don't pay an unfair allocation for services that really don't accrue to them. So it's a fee-based expenditure. There are other things that we do, like provide advice to the board, work with the manager, work with department staff, consider policy changes, provide day-to-day advice and opinions, attend meetings on request, and provide analysis memos. This year, we've done revisions to the sign ordinance. There are a number of other text amendments that were included as part of that budget. And it's a part of general planning services. My preference, when we have special projects, like I would consider the RFP to be a special project, would be to have that, you know, line itemed or at least a part of the annual budget justification process so that I can know, you know, as a project manager, how to, you know, account for what tasks are being done and how that project is being done efficiently. So, you know, even, you know, for, as we're considering the RFP as part of the planning budget, I'm still tracking those budgets personally, that budget line item as a separate thing from general planning services personally so that I can report back. And, you know, the memo I prepared on that topic includes the amount that we've expended so far in the RFP, which is just over three thousand dollars. So, you know, we have been efficient. And, you know, that's probably a good answer.
Okay.
I have a question, kind of ties into this. So we've already sent out the RFP, right?
We have not released the RFP, no.
When are we doing that? I thought we...
Who thought this was due?
We approved it as a board. They were making some adjustments on the timing that it was going out. And to release it between Christmas and New Year's or like right before Christmas was not a wise idea. So then Mr. Ains and Mr. Lippens were working with...
November 28th?
To put together an updated timeline for release. It should be released relatively quickly, huh?
Yeah, we have a task list. One of those is making some minor changes to township website. We've identified a list of potential developer respondents. And it's really just triggering that schedule. But there were always concerns about releasing over the holidays. And since we had this meeting scheduled tonight, I thought I'd talk to the board. Mr. Ains and I have been working on a schedule. It's prepared to go out.
So then we haven't spent much of the RFP budget? Or what was budgeted for the RFP? Because it hasn't gone out yet?
We've expended just over three thousand dollars in writing the RFP and preparing materials for that release.
Ms. Chick?
So, so I'm understanding what you are saying. The board approved sending out the RFP. And at the time we approved sending out the RFP, we were giving a schedule. But in between the time that we said, okay, let's send it out, changes had been made without the board's knowledge. And this is concerning to me.
At the time that the board approved the RFP, the board also approved the township manager to adjust the schedule accordingly. At that time, we got comments, you know, from the DDA, one being that they thought we should extend the timeline between the time when we proposed to do a pre-development meeting. What's that?
That needs to come to the board.
That's a board decision.
That's a board decision, not a DDA.
It was, it was, that comment came the night that the board approved it. And the board approved the township manager to work with us to modify the schedule independently. So we are absolutely working according to what the board approved.
Okay, so what is our target date for getting it out?
If it's been already worked out.
We're going into our second week of January already?
Yeah, the target date that I distributed to the manager day was January 19th, which is about a month behind what we initially thought it would be.
Wow.
The nineteenth is a holiday, so probably not go out until the twentieth.
Why can't it go out before then? Why can't it go out if you're already, what is, what's holding it up?
Well, what's holding it up is making changes to the website and basically launching it and releasing it. I mean, we can work on that and have been working on it. But what we want to do is do it all at once and do it right, which is the way it should be done. And what I, the direction that I received was to make sure that it was done all at once and done right, because we've got one chance at releasing it.
Ms. Manley?
Can you just give a little one-minute blurb on what an RFP is? For the listening audience?
Oh, it's a request for proposals. So, you know, we're talking about the North Village site, which the township has done some planning around, purchased the site. And we've worked on a solicitation process so that we can get private developers who might be interested in purchasing a portion of the site to develop some of it, to help assist in the creation of public amenities on the site, to, you know, propose what types of benefits they could create for the township on that site. When proposals are received, the board will have the opportunity to review what's submitted and make a decision.
Thank you.
There's quite a bit of material that goes into producing something that can be put out there for the public. So my understanding is that it has taken some time to get together. So I'm looking forward, though, to having it released and starting to get some action there. And I have great hopes for this project in the new year. I was looking at your budget, however, the planner fees. And we did up the planner fees about five thousand dollars from last year. So it went from thirty-five thousand to about forty thousand. And so the expectation was that the RFP could be included in that. But I also look at what was, has been spent year-to-date balance. And I understand that there is another, there are a couple of other months that need to be charged into this. But we still are below fifty percent with half the year used up, the way I look at this. So if you look at page five on our revenue expenditure report, it's showing only thirty-four percent of our budget being used so far in this fiscal year. But you did indicate there was probably about three thousand, maybe thirty-five hundred more that would be charged here. So that would be seventeen thousand dollars of the forty thousand being used in the first...
Five months.
First, well, our year-to-date balance would be, well, December 31st. So if you're adding in November and December, and we add thirty-five hundred dollars, we're at seventeen, that's six months. We're at seventeen thousand for six months. So anyway, a little less than half. So my hope is that we continue on that trend and are able to actually deal with the RFP with that extra money. But if we're giving away free concept meetings, I don't know. So, you know, all of these things we need as a board to keep in mind as we move forward. And there may need to be an adjustment in the future. I don't have a problem with us not allocating the extra ten thousand dollars, I guess was what you were requesting at this time. But I want the board to be cognizant of the fact that we may need to allocate a little more if we want this RFP process to be successful. So, anyway, that's my comment on that. Ms. Chick?
Just one, because I'm looking at your memo from, I don't see, oh, October 11th, 2017. We were giving this back in October 11th of 2017. And we've been doing a lot of talking about updating our zoning ordinances and all of the items that are listed in this document that's gone out in our packets before. But we've canceled two planning commission meetings. Is there some reason why we haven't been able to start on any of this? Or, I, no?
At the meeting, the planning commission meetings, when we discussed this scope of work, the direction that we were given was to provide a scope to the board for approval. That scope was on your agenda last month for approval, the board's agenda last month, and it was not approved. So I'm here tonight.
Oh, this was not approved?
Right, we need to do that as number one tonight.
Yeah, as soon as...
I'm sorry, I wasn't here last night.
Oh, it's okay. As soon as it's approved, we're going to, you know, maybe next week, be talking about it at planning commission. And, you know, obviously, anytime there's business, we're going to be meeting at planning commission. So the only...
Well, other than, you know, people coming into the township and wanting to do something, having site plans or whatever to look at, we should be working on these things. We should always have something to do, I'm thinking.
This is, this will be a full work plan. We will have business this year if this is approved, absolutely.
Okay. Ms. Bellinger?
Are we now talking about the agenda item number one, the zoning amendments?
Yes.
I have a couple of questions or concerns, perhaps. On item number one, letter C, adopt a minimum development requirements for properties that do not conform to site design, access, and safety standards. Now, is this referring to current existing properties? In other words, are we wanting to try to force change for somebody who's already got something in particular, as a residence, at a site? There's another one, too, that brings the same question. And that's number four. Revised non-conforming use and non-conforming site standards to encourage blatant and violated site owners to take step towards compliance. I'm not sure, is there some precautions here to prevent a potential situation where there could be bullying of somebody who has like an older structure, an older property, a smaller parcel?
No, but that's not necessarily what it means.
No.
It kind of means the opposite.
Yeah.
Oh, does it, okay.
Well, this is, the intent of these types of revisions are actually to encourage people who maybe have sites that, you know, they want to update but can't, or...
Because they're non-conforming.
Because they're non-conforming...
To give them some leeway, then, right?
Well, right, to allow for iterative investment, sorry.
Yeah, so, because I'm on the ZB, I can help a little here. Most of, almost all the properties along the lakes, cottage summer homes... Most of, almost all the properties along the lakes, cottage summer homes, everything in, are non-conforming. So every time somebody wants to upgrade, do improvements on their homes, on their property, they do have to come before the ZBA.
This is to help alleviate some of that?
Right.
Wonderful. I do like section two A and B, where it permit sketches and so forth, make it easier for people.
Most of them, lake lots are like 40-foot.
Right.
So a lot of these have been kind of, Mr. Lippens has been compiling as we find the problems, you know, that are being, becoming evident during the zoning administration, the zoning compliance process. And we're trying to improve the situation for our businesses and our homeowners. So, and all of this, just because it's on this list doesn't mean that the Planning Commission will agree or decide to move forward, or they may decide to move forward even more aggressively to change some of these things. But that's, that's what Ms. Chick does as part of the Planning Commission. She, they consider all of the legal aspects of it and see how it will fit in the community. And that's their job, and that's what they do. So that's why referring these kind of issues to the Planning Commission is an appropriate step. And we need to make sure that we provide funding and the amount of time. And having been chair of the Planning Commission, I know it takes a lot of time to actually do the amendments and run them through the process. There's a public hearing that goes along with all of these amendment changes. And then the Planning Commission does take a long time also to review them and study what might be most appropriate. So if other board members are finding things that they need to have the Planning Commission look at, please feel free to contact Ms. Chick, or Mr. Lippens, or Mr. Ains about that. Ms. Bellinger.
Now, if we do not approve this proposal tonight, we can still consider this at a future time, a near-future time?
What do you mean, if we don't consider?
If we do not approve this, item number one, tonight, is it something we can consider in the near future?
Well, I would hope that the Planning Commission could move forward with some of this anyway. I mean, they will be moving forward with some of this.
Good to hear, that's good to hear. They can, they can do that regardless of while we decide if this is what we want to do right now. With the Planning Commission, it'd be nice if they would move ahead with improving these ordinances.
Right, but this is a significant amount of work. And if we don't provide, if we don't make sure that they're funded appropriately, just because we give them $10,000 to work on all this doesn't mean that they will spend it all. I mean, I know some people that are, may not agree, may not find that, but, but- But anyway, they keep track of it, and it can be done efficiently.
The purpose of doing an authorization is so that we can also be, hold ourselves accountable to a specific budget. So when I provide a scope that has a budget attached to it, it's so that you know that's what the budget is, and we can do the work. And, you know, that's the advantage to doing it this way, to saying, "Let's budget this work over two fiscal cycles. Let's get it done in a year." We can track it, we can make sure it's been done. We'll say, "The other projects that I've done for the township as project manager, we've brought them in on budget. We've held to the schedule. We've delivered all of the items that we need to in those projects." And that's a part of transparency. The other thing I'd like to point out, certainly about the proposal to the master plan and the zoning ordinance, is that, well, I know the zoning ordinance is, you know, really attractive. It's the rules that are attached to development. I really think it's important to stress that any policy changes we make to our legal code have to be founded in the master plan. And there are a lot of changes we've heard that people are interested in considering that need to be incorporated into the master plan, specifically the Whitmore Lake District, land preservation issues. And with the expansion of 23, there's new development pressures around the interchanges. And I think that these, these issues have generated interest and potential zoning changes. And we really can't proceed with that level of thinking until we do do a master plan update. The other advantage to doing the master plan updated, it will give the township the opportunity to adopt, officially adopt, the downtown plan and the North Village plan. And there are zoning changes we might want to make that are consistent with those two planning processes as well. And until those are officially adopted, we really can't proceed with revising those zoning ordinance requirements as well. So it's a very important part of the process. But there are zoning things we can start on right away once authorized, for sure.
Okay. Ms. Selnuck?
So, first, I'd like to take these separate when we vote for approval. So is it my understanding that the RFP, we think, is going to be contained in the $40,000 of the extra $10,000? Do you think that, because here's my concern, is, again, on October 24th, you came and said, "Yes". On December 13th, you came and said, "No". That's not a long time difference. I could see if you came six months later and said, "Well, you know, it's running over", but it was very short. So, so you have a $40,000 budget right now. Is, do we think the RFP is contained in that $40,000? Or do we think it will be $40,000 plus the $10,000, so it will be $50,000?
What, what, there are, we've been asked to increase the amount of services that we're providing as part of base-level planning services. So there is a reason why we looked at the planning budget and provided some revisions between October and December. We've heard a lot of interest in improving services. So we're trying to be responsive to that. This evening, you know, our report says that we're around 50%. I'm confident that if there's no action on that change tonight, we can come back at a later time with a report. And, you know, I'll make an effort to keep the services under that $40,000. That's what I'm being asked to do. I will happily do that.
Okay, and so, to me, I'd like to obviously pursue the zoning. And at this point in time, I'd like to keep the budget at 40 and see, keep us updated and abreast. And you said you keep the line items. However, I'm not so sure about the master plan, because I believe at a PC meeting on April 19th, and it wasn't you, I don't believe, Paul, it was probably, oh, Patrick Sloan, he had indicated he didn't think there was a need to update the master plan. And that it could be-
In 19.
Not this year.
So last year. Yeah, so last-
Not this year, he was here.
Yeah, yeah. So he said that it was good until 2019.
You'd have to start working on it.
Well, I mean, he said that it had to be updated by 2019. There was a whole discussion about the minimum requirements to actually consider an update to the plan. I think the last update was, but the, there was an update done in 2014. That-
It was a minor.
Yeah, right.
Or at least to get it for the-
Yeah, so, yeah.
So we're there.
So.
The state, the State Planning Act requires that master plans are updated every five years. So that's probably what he said, was based on state requirements, you don't have to update your master plan. And that, that's true. But based on development pressures and the desire to change the zoning districts and change the regulations that apply in those zoning districts, you do have to update it if you want to make those changes. If you don't want to make those changes-
You can update it every year if you want to.
Yeah, you could update it every year. And the Planning Commission recommended, as part of the work plan for this year, you know, last year, updating the master plan. So now we're, a year later, we're having the same discussion.
Right, and we were going to split it between two fiscal years. So that was going to be 12-5 in this fiscal year and 12-5 in the next fiscal year. And hopefully, we will get through the vast majority of these zoning amendments here. So I'd kind of, I would like us to move along and actually make a motion.
I would like them made separately.
What, for the zoning amendment?
Yep.
And the master plan?
The RFP and the master plan, please.
Okay. I would like to make a motion that we accept the proposal from McKenna to do the zoning ordinance amendments.
I'll support.
Roll call.
Motion by Chalkley, support by Chick. Roll call vote, please. Or do we have any more discussion?
Yes, I have a discussion. Is that with or without the dollar amount attached? Is that to do the zoning?
We will need the dollar amount attached. What is it, $7,500?
This is for the zoning part?
Just for the zoning part?
The total is $14,500.
Okay.
So it'll be $7,250.
Well, if that's over two fiscal years, are we splitting that one over two fiscal years?
No.
No.
Yes.
Count it as one vote for the month.
Well, right, but so-
It's one vote, but it's split over two years.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, $14,500 over a two-year period. So we're gonna take the $40,000 fee and then basically add $14,500 to that fee.
$7,500.
$7,500 and then the other, so. So how do you want to, I mean, how do you want to reflect that dollar amount in your motion? Because I would like to see it reflected.
That would be $7,250 in this fiscal year.
You're gonna do 50/50.
Right, it's gonna be split, but we're not talking about the next fiscal year's budget till next fiscal year, so. I mean, we can approve it all, but in our next fiscal year budget, we need to make sure that money's in there for that. Our fiscal year ends the end of June, so we only have like six months left, less than six months. Question? Does it make sense?
Well, what doesn't make sense is you don't know if you're gonna be able to spend the 50%, or you're only spending 30%. If you're spending 70% this year and 30% next year, I mean, I would just make the vote that it's $14,500 in the next two fiscal years.
And carry it, and carry it over?
And carry it over.
Okay, as long as we remember that when we're doing our fiscal year. Okay, as long as we're doing that in our next budget, budget evaluation. Do you have any comments on this, Mr. Ains?
No, it's fine to do it that way. And then we'll just look at where you're at at the end of this year. And then when we do next year's budget, put the difference in next year.
Yes.
Okay. So the motion is made, support, I mean, from Chalkley, support by Chick, to approve the zoning ordinance amendments proposal, including the fee of $14,500. I guess we need a roll call vote. Oh, Ms. Bellinger.
So this is something that we absolutely do need to do?
If we want to be business-friendly and we want to get this work done on our zoning ordinance-
Anywhere we could do it more cost-effectively, in-house?
No.
Have anybody in-house?
So, I mean, I, my thought is, we need to promote businesses in the defined area of the master plan. And promote businesses that already exist so that it's easy for the use to change. So even though I really don't like the dollar amount, I think we've heard enough from the public that says, "This is important to them. It's important to me."
And this will actually do this? This is gonna solve problems?
I think they've identified enough in here that it will solve the problem.
And if it doesn't, I'll be looking for a refund.
Right.
Yeah, does it come with a refund?
Right.
But, I mean, so, I mean, that's my opinion on it, so yes. I will be voting yes, because I think this is an important thing, that we need to try to do something. And if it doesn't work, be, hold people accountable.
Okay. All right, roll call vote?
Manley, yes. Chick?
Yes.
Selnuck?
Yes.
Otto?
Yes.
Bellinger?
Yes.
Docket?
No.
Chalkley?
Yes. That passes 6-0, no, 6-1. Thank you. So we will get the zoning amendments going. The next portion of that is the master plan. So I would like to move that we accept the McKenna proposal for the master plan review for the fee in the proposal.
$1,500. $24,500.
$24,500 plus if in, there might be-
Over two fiscal years.
Over two fiscal years. There may need to be an additional workshop that's listed there, but maybe not. That's up to the Planning Commission, they run this project.
I'll support.
Okay, so motion by Chalkley, support by Chick. Any more discussion?
So on this one, I'm not so sure, based on the Planning Commission meeting that I read and just in general, I'd like to see how the zoning ordinance go and what impact they currently have. That's just my opinion.
If I didn't feel so strongly that we need to do some tweaking around some of our interchanges, and I don't expect it to be, I don't know, disruptive, I guess I would have to say. But I do think that we do need to do some tweaking of our master plan in the US-23 corridor, especially around the interchanges. So it needs to be, we can't do rezoning. We can't do a lot if we don't, if the master plan doesn't support it. And this is where we get the public to tell us how they feel about this development. So, and this is an opportunity to reach out. We say we want to communicate. And this is, this is the way we do it. And the Planning Commission is totally capable of running this process and soliciting that kind of input. I feel very strongly that we need to move forward on this. We have an opportunity here now with the ATM done. And let's, let's get something going here for the community.
So my question, is this proposal the tweaking plan? Or is it more than tweaking to the master plan?
It's the tweaking plan. This is what needs to be done to move forward. Can you say that?
All right.
This proposal is a tweaking plan. This is what needs to happen in the master plan for you to move forward with the development pressures that we're currently hearing about. And I agree with the supervisor that it needs to be done in concert with the feedback from the public. We don't want to move ahead of where the past policy was without getting feedback and checking in.
Right.
So, so we've heard this, that there are development pressures and people are coming. Can we share who and what it is?
And what the level of interest is?
Yeah.
Kind of my-
We've just had a, we've had a few inquiries about parcels along the US-23 corridor. So far, we're not able to offer very much. You know, something within the master plan and the feedback. We're moving ahead here as a board. We're doing the rate study. We're doing, we're doing what we need to do to attract, but we're not there yet. So this will be an opportunity to kind of lay that all out again and give that kind of information out there to the, to the public in the development community. Ms. Chick, you had a comment?
No, I just wanted to reiterate what Mr. Lippens was saying, that these zoning amendments and the master plan work together. You can't do one without them. Well, you can, but it's, it's gonna be very awkward and it's probably not going to work if you want to do what you want to do. And in regard to the interest that we're getting into the township for pressure developments, I know we've talked about that before, but I think the board would like to hear when those interests come in to the township. If somebody contacts, you know, don't need a lot of detail. Just say, "Hey, you know, communicated to the board, you know, who it is and what it's about and what they want". And that helps us make a decision about if we want to okay a master plan in regard to someone who's interested in a piece of property anywhere in the township, so.
Yeah, there hasn't been anybody in the door recently that I am aware of. Yeah, you know, that this board doesn't know, doesn't know about. So.
That's kind of my concern, too. It's like, are we spending $25,000 for a couple inquiries? And how serious, I mean, if these people are serious enough?
Oh, if you're just talking about residential, there's only been a couple of those.
The 23-quarter corridor.
Right, the 23-quarter, but there's been a lot of interest commercially. So, you know, they stop and they've met with Paul and Steve, and there's been a lot of interest commercially. But we haven't, you know, like I said in my report, we have some opportunities in a few concise areas to do something that would be helpful within the current master plan. This master plan amendment, I don't anticipate being extreme. We all ran, the, the public agreed with the current master plan. It, I believe it's just needs some improvement in certain areas and that's what I believe the, the Planning Commission will be able to do. So, anyway, so I made the motion. Oh, Ms. Belliger, last comment here?
I, I would like to postpone this part of it, the master plan part. You say it only needs slight tweaking, well, perhaps it needs, perhaps we can get this done a little more effectively. And if we have commercial interest coming into the township looking to do something, we, we can deal with them. And, you know, we have the zoning board and we have a planning commission, we can accommodate within the master plan, of course.
But we can't rezone if the master plan doesn't support it. And that's the problem right now. We have some parcels that could have better zoning, underlying zoning and, and the master plan won't, currently doesn't support that in a couple areas in the US twenty-three corridor and it would be really helpful. Can we?
And the, as a planning commissioner, and on the planning commission, the planning commission can't update a master plan without the help of a planner.
Right.
We can't.
You can't do it anywhere.
No.
So could we get a list of, you know, here's what it's currently zoned, here's what we think it needs to be zoned? In particular, in the, you know, the expressway interchange. Cause when I look at the area plans change on page, I guess it would be page two, it, it indicates currently the master plan has five large subareas, the smallest of which is roughly four square miles. We recommend consolidating the subareas that share similar, I don't know if that's important or not. What I think is important is if we think there's, has been interest out of the expressway interchange, that we just do a, you know, here's what it's currently zoned, here's what we're looking to propose the zoning and then go forward. And I would feel more comfortable knowing that and potentially spending the money to say, yep, it's zoned this, we want this.
That's not, but that's not a simple decision. It, it takes a lot of discussion by the Planning Commission on just that area and all the options that you have available, plus input from, it's not something you just put down a list, it's something the Planning Commission works on for meetings, not just.
Yeah.
And then you have to have the public input on top of those, you have to have.
Certainly, we need the public input in that, certainly. But, I mean, okay.
Okay, and this is over two fiscal years. So we have a motion on the table, let's have a roll call vote, please.
Chick?
Yes.
Zelenak?
No.
Chalkley?
Yes.
Docket?
No.
Otto?
Yes.
Manley, no. Belliger?
No.
Okay, that fails. We will hopefully revisit this at another time, maybe six months down the, the road, three months down the road. And I would ask the Planning Commission to consider moving forward on rezoning consistent with the master plan in areas where that can be done.
Thank you.
Thank you, I'm sorry, Mr. Lippens. Thank you for coming for the whole evening. We have, have another item on the agenda that I have a quick question on after we take care of the budget amendment resolution. If you don't mind sticking around.
Yes, I have a question on that too, so, that'd be great.
Okay. Resolution seventeen-five-seventy-seven, the budget amendments. All right, we saw this last month and we're bringing it back and.
Does, does this need to be amended?
Absolutely.
Because of the votes we just took?
Um, we will have to, we will have to change some of the items in here based on the votes that we just took. We do, on the first, page one of nine, you will see, add seventy-two fifty for half the cost of the review of the zoning ordinances by McKenna, half will be paid in twenty-eighteen.
What page are you on?
Page, well, it's, it's this, the budget amendment, and I'm on page one, so turn. Turn the page. So that passed. The ten thousand dollar planning fees for the North Village and the twelve-five for half of the master plan did not pass, so that will be removed.
Well, that's great.
Okay.
Can I, can you reiterate that, please? So you said the one that is on there is a seven-two-five zero.
The seven-two-five-zero passed.
Okay, correct, thanks.
And so that's half the cost of the review of the zoning ordinances by McKenna. Now, we could throw all the, I mean, we did pass fourteen-five, but half of it's going into the other fiscal year. We could put all fourteen-five in here, actually, that's what passed, was the fourteen-five. So instead of seventy-two-fifty, we will put in fourteen-five.
I don't think you can, cause it crossed, it crossed fiscal years.
Right. Well, we talked about being, carrying it over at the end.
But this is, this year's budget, so it's only seven thousand two hundred and fifty that we're gonna see in this year's budget and impact our fund balance and all that. So if you put in the full amount, you're gonna have to make the budget adjustment at the end of June to take it out because you're not going to spend it or we're not supposed to spend it.
That's true, that's true, Ms. Zelnok. Okay, we will, we will leave it, we'll leave it at seventy-two-fifty, but remember, next fiscal year, we need that seventy-two-fifty in addition. Okay, and that's all the changes that we made so far tonight with what we just dealt with. Now, there was some controversy over the, removing the twenty-five thousand dollars from the fire department. Fire and medical rescue, Mr. Wagner had a comment about that. But there is an offset also when we moved the LCSA money into that budget. So it was really a hit of about fourteen thousand dollars.
What page are you on?
Same page.
Right, you'll see.
Page five oh-nine.
Page one, yeah, and page. Page five. Chief Wagner has a comment about this item though, and I would like him to be able to speak to it at this time.
So I brought up that last, I don't know if it was, yeah, it was last meeting. The concern I had of removing that twenty-five thousand, because I do have some extensive expenditures upcoming.
I see no twenty-five thousand on page five. I thought you just said page five.
Yeah, page five, on the right-hand side.
It's, it's on both, both pages.
One's a debit, one's a credit.
Last page.
So, my, my concern was removing that twenty-five thousand from the budget and I, nobody really even had given me a chance to argue for it or even a couple of other of the amendments that were changed. And then there was supposed to have been a meeting, we really never had a chance to meet. Talking to the supervisor tonight, she explained the, you know, the eleven or twelve thousand dollars that we would get that we didn't expect. But then I had brought up also the thirty thousand dollar unexpected expenditure that I have to replace some SCBA bottles. What I'm gonna try to do, at least for this current fiscal year, is hold off on that thirty thousand dollar expenditure for the SCBA bottles in hopes, we are currently.
What are you saying, SBA?
They're basically the air bottles that we wear in fires. They're either are expired or are about to expire. So we are currently writing a, a grant with several other fire departments for assistance to firefighters grant for SCBAs and a couple of other things in hopes to get those replaced. We will know probably late, middle to late summer whether we're successful. Some of these regional grants, we've been pretty fortunate in the Washington County area in the last few years, so I'm hoping to be successful. But I may be coming back next budget year, asking for that again if we aren't successful, so. I, I guess that's my only comment.
So you believe you can absorb the fourteen thousand dollar this year and then we, we could reinstate the twenty-five next year?
We'll look at it next budget process and, yeah, I mean, I'll have to really look at the budget to see if I need to cut where I need to cut to, to make it work this year.
Okay, thank you.
So I have a comment on this, Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Ms. Zelnok.
Is, my thought is, we did give the twenty-five thousand and it has been a recommendation under the auditors that we, going forward, stop this practice. But we did do it this year. You are receiving the eleven thousand two hundred and eighty-two, so my recommendation is that we remove eleven thousand two hundred and eighty-two from the budget this year cause it is offset by the reallocation of the state revenue sharing.
I would support something along those lines, as opposed to just flat dropping it unexpectedly.
Well, the eleven thousand two hundred and eighty-two is the cell tower income. That you're.
Isn't it, on page five, isn't the eleven thousand two eighty-two the reallocation?
Oh, you're right, you're right, I'm looking at the wrong number. I'm looking at the wrong number. Okay, so what's your proposal there then, to remove?
My proposal is that we remove eleven thousand two hundred and eighty-two because it's being increased because of the LCSA state revenue sharing. So that, I believe, would leave about thirteen thousand seven hundred and eighteen dollars. So if you add the two, Chief and the fire department would have the twenty-four, twenty-five thousand that was originally allocated.
Okay.
That's just.
Okay, so Ms. Zelnok proposes that instead of twenty-five thousand, we give him thirteen thousand, how much? Seven hundred and eighteen dollars instead of the twenty-five thousand, just to make it whole?
Correct.
Okay, you wanna make a motion and we will vote on whether we wanna do that or not?
Sure, so I gotta think about how this is gonna work.
Ms. Zelnok moves to decrease the twenty-five thousand dollars to thirteen thousand seven hundred and eighteen dollars.
Correct, that's correct.
Okay. So.
No support.
Okay, Zelnok moved.
Yep, so, we, the motion is, we would remove thirteen thousand seven hundred and eighteen dollars contribution from the general fund to the medical rescue fund.
Okay. Roll call vote? No? What do you, what do you need, Mr. Docket?
Wagner does not need, if he needs money, he needs to go to the people and he needs to get a millage. Why do we people continue to give him money out of the general fund? He gets eight hundred and some thousand dollars from taxes. If that's not, he'll never have enough money, he never has since he's worked here. We constantly give him money from the taxpayers and I believe that's wrong. And if he needs money, let him go and get it from the taxpayers. I'm sick of him for, we gave him, we gave him two and a half million dollars earlier, now we're giving him twenty-five thousand. It's unnecessary. I don't understand how you can just take people's hard-earned money taxes.
That's enough, Mr. Docket.
Hand it to Wagner, who will never have enough money, never stayed in budget since he's worked here.
Ms. Belliger?
Well, I'd, I'd like to, um, hear a little bit, again, the detail of money that was given from the fire department to the building. I, I'd like to know a little bit more about that, how was it supposed to be and what did happen?
Okay, I promised I wouldn't talk about it last year, but it's a new year, so I can talk about it, right?
This year, yeah, it's a new year, you can.
So, when this building was built, the building was originally planned to be built on a police and fire millage. You see that on your taxes, right? So af, after that planning took place, the township board at the time decided they wanted addition, additions built. So they borrowed three and a half million dollars on a couple of different bonds. For the first few years of those bonds, the, the township general fund paid for those bonds. They saw at the time that the general fund was going broke or losing money or about to lose money. So then they required at that time, the police department and the fire department in the ballpark area to kick in a hundred thousand dollars a year out of their budget. And that's been going on for, and I had Rick Jaeger run me a report probably two years ago now. And at that time, the police and fire department had contributed to the general fund about one and a half million dollars to pay for those bonds. Those, in my opinion, those, you know, those payments were expected to be made by the general fund. And at the time, the board was expecting growth in the area to be able to absorb the extra payments for those bonds, to basically build the second floor of this building. So, again, around a hundred thousand dollars a year comes out of the police department fund, which is about a million and a half budget, and a hundred thousand dollars a year comes out of the fire department fund, which is about a six hundred, six hundred and fifty thousand dollar budget. So that's a significant hit to the fire department budget percentage-wise for that. And so, the fire department was having trouble, you know, back ten years ago, twelve years ago, when they started doing this, staying within their budget for what they had. So the general fund at that time was, and it's, it's varied between twenty and twenty-five thousand dollars a year that the general fund has contributed to the fire department. The general fund, to my knowledge, and I may stand corrected on this, that they've never contributed to the law enforcement fund. I, I may be wrong about that, not since I've been here anyhow, so.
So it sounds like there's been a lot of mixing of funds.
Correct, yeah, I mean.
So is it possible that, that there's a deficit? Is there, is there, is there something that this general fund, in effect, owes the other funds?
Well, that, that was at the time the controller, Colleen Coogan, said that you couldn't, the way the millages were, you couldn't expend, I think, millage money on general fund operations. But the way they could get the money was have them pay for a portion of the bonds on this building. This building's paid for in two thousand twenty-three, I believe. So, so while I understand Mr. Docket, and he takes his opportunity every time he gets to yell at me about the twenty-five thousand dollars, and, and I understand that, I, I would disagree with the fact that I, I've, I've never gone over budget for what's been approved. Every budget that I've ever had, I've stayed within for the ten years I've been here. But, on the other hand, I feel that the police and fire department have subsidized the general fund to help pay for the bonds on this building, so. Does that explain?
That helps, yeah, it's interesting, it sounds, it's an interesting story. It makes for complications, but I thank you for sharing it.
So. Ms. Zelnok, oh, Mr., Mr. Doc.
There's no free lunch, everybody has to pay.
Okay. Ms. Zelnok had made a motion to change the twenty-five thousand dollars that was being provided to the fire and medical rescue to thirteen thousand seven hundred and eighteen dollars. Let's have a roll call vote on that.
Docket?
No.
Chalkley?
Yes.
Manley?
Yes.
Otto?
Yes.
Zelenak?
Yes.
Belliger?
Yes.
Chick?
Yes.
Okay, that passes, thank you. All right. All right, so we now have our entire budget amendment before us with that amendment and the removal of the 22.5 for the planner fees for the North Village RFP and 12.5 for the half of the master plan. And that, those are the only changes then, those three. So I would like to make a motion that we adopt the budget amendment number three as revised.
Support.
Okay, motion by Chockley, support by Zelnoc. Roll call vote, please. Otto?
Yes.
Bellinger?
Yes.
Chick?
Yes.
Docket?
Oh.
Zelenoc?
Yes.
Chockley?
Yes.
Manley?
Yes.
Okay, that passes, 6-0, thank you. 6-1, that's right. I keep thinking he's on vacation, Mr. Docket.
Must be the common core mask.
Okay, the next item is the ordinance, the zoning ordinance amendment, the open and unroofed terraces, patios, and porches. What questions do you have?
Yes, questions. I did have a question on that one.
Go ahead.
Is there, is this addressing a particular existing property or existing issues? I mean, what has brought this and what is the, the concerns that brings this up? It sounds like it's going to really affect, could affect quite a few people.
So here, here's my understanding, this was actually worked on before I started supporting Planning Commission. But there are essentially conflicting regulations in the zoning ordinance. One that requires porches on houses to be within the setbacks, another that is an exception. And essentially what this means is that if people, there's, there was a loophole, if you build a porch and you don't attach it to your house, you could then build it to the, to the property edge. And so the Planning Commission talked about it at some length and ended with the idea that they should remove these awnings and unroofed terraces and porches from the exemption, but allow the steps to remain in so people could still build steps to the property line from a porch. And they also added at-grade sidewalks to clarify that you could build sidewalks at the grade of your house to the property edge too, that that was an exception.
So it's not the property edge, it's the, is it the property edge or is it the setback?
Setback, right?
You, but you can have a driveway and a setback, correct? Do you have to get a variance? Hmm, I don't know.
The concern, I believe, the biggest concern that came up at the meetings was that a lot of these are impervious surfaces and that if they wanted to, they could, if it wasn't attached to the house, they could build a huge patio, take up most of the property, and then we'd have drainage issues on both sides of it, so it's...
That's true.
That was the big issue.
And we didn't, we don't manage driveways at all.
Um, we're at, we do manage...
Well, as far as impervious surfaces go, I mean, we, we only look at impervious surfaces as far as the building footprint goes, correct? I mean, I agree that a driveway is an impervious surface that needs to be considered in some areas. I wouldn't say on 10 acres in the middle of the, you know, ag area that a driveway is that big of a deal, but around the lake, yeah, so it could be.
In agriculture areas, in farming areas, we do consider driveways.
I'm, I'm talking about impervious, as an impervious surface, you know? That water isn't going anywhere, you know, significant if you've got a driveway on 10 acres, but around the lake, you could have a lot of water coming off. So this would, if we changed this as requested here, somebody could not build like a brick patio out, they'd have to get a, they'd have to come in for a zoning compliance, we're not, just to make sure they're not getting it past the setback? How does this work?
No, they, they could still build it. They would have to comply with the area placement and height regulations, the predominant one being the setback. So they couldn't build their patio all the way to the property edge.
True. But we don't seem to care here about at-grade sidewalks and private driveways? And how are those different than potentially a concrete patio?
Well, the, in, in those cases, there's a clarification that sidewalks means at-grade sidewalk, so essentially if it's a sidewalk along the front of your property. But the, you know, driveway is an access issue. So, you know, if you need access to your house, we're not saying that, that has to comply with a setback requirement. Particularly, that might apply if you have a small lot frontage and you need, in order to access the side of your building, maybe your driveway has to go closer to your lot line. It, you know, permits you not, not to have to go to, for a variance on that, that type of an access.
Wagner's in charge of driveways, aren't you?
I just, I approve the length and width and the appropriate makeup.
And then those variances do come to the ZBA.
I'm sure they do. Mine did. I had too long of a driveway. But as far as at-grade sidewalks, because this says exemptions from area placement and height regulations, they're not exempt from setbacks though. Is that correct?
I think the setback would require, that would be an area or a placement regulation.
Okay, so that a driveway would be exempt on any lot? So they could, it could be right next to the...
Property.
Property line?
And it currently is exempt. I mean, what you're reading is the current regulation.
It is exempt, okay.
The modifications are the striking of patios, porches, unroofed terraces, and...
Okay.
Which previously were exempt, and that was in, there was a conflicting regulation that required those things that were attached to structures to comply with those regulations. So this exemption is in direct conflict with another regulation, which thereby would encourage people to do something like, I'm going to build a porch, I'm just not going to attach it to my house, and now I can build it across the entire site because it's not attached to my house. So this is fixing that.
Okay. And sidewalks and driveways are different than a, say, brick paver patio physically?
Different in that they're, you know, for providing access, so picture, you know...
I'm just thinking about, you know, now the poor guy who wants to do, you know, some sort of little concrete pad out in back of his, you know, back of his house to put his, he can put his outdoor cooking equipment right up to the property line, but he can't put a, right, no, up to the property line according to this. You know, but he can't put it on a concrete pad or something? Or a brick paver patio without coming and asking for permission and location on the site? I, I'm just confused exactly about what's the protocol?
If you were permitted to do that type of an improvement without getting a building permit, you know, some things you can make those modifications, it just means that you have to do so in compliance with the area placement and height regulations.
Okay. Whatever those might be. I, I, my biggest concern with this is there wasn't enough detail from the discussion from the Planning Commission in the minutes that are here to really give me an idea of what they, what they talked about, and the, and the memo was kind of sketchy. What, what memo, I suppose? There wasn't enough detail in here, so, anyway. I just didn't want to put more regulations on our, our property owners who want to build a little brick paver patio out back of their house. Now they got to come and spend $100 for zoning compliance. One, if they built a sidewalk, they wouldn't, it wouldn't be a big deal, so...
I, I think you'd just have to think about, like, the worst-case scenario, which would be somebody, you know, building a patio that was their entire back, backyard with...
Yeah, would cover their whole backyard, which is...
So this is, it was a practical change that I think Planning Commission was interested in making to kind of fix a loophole or conflict in the ordinance.
Okay.
Yeah, there is setbacks, you have to comply with the setbacks.
Yeah, and the sidewalks and the driveways had to do with access.
Okay. Okay. All right, somebody want to make a motion then on this one?
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance 18-56, zoning ordinance amendment, open and unroofed terraces, patios, and porches.
I'll support.
Okay, motion by Chick and support by Ms. Otto. Any more discussion? Okay, roll call vote, please. Chick?
Yes.
Otto?
Yes.
Manley?
Yes.
Bellinger?
Yes.
Chockley?
No.
Docket? Zelenoc?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, that passes, 5-3. I better write down all of us noes. Oh, did I, did I do that wrong?
That common core mask is working hard.
5-2, 5-2.
It's 5-2, okay, now me and Docket. Oh, gosh, Mr. Docket? Yes, I guess so, okay. There we go.
Get the new mask going on.
Yeah, you're right. 5-3 makes eight. Okay, next item here, we need to add an, an addendum to this one.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so the next item is the hiring of firefighter trainee Daniel Smith, and I need to add an addendum to also promote Blake, and I guess I should have amended...
Version.
From cadet firefighter to paid-on-call firefighter trainee. And I can let Mr. Wagner talk about that.
So this Daniel Smith is not the Dan Smith we all know, right? So he's a, a little bit younger than Dan that we know. He, that would be contingent on background and physical passing. The Blake Vershum thing, Blake already is a cadet, you approved him probably around a year ago, and so he couldn't be, he was trained, but he couldn't be a firefighter because he wasn't 18. He turned 18 in November, so we'd like to make him a formal firefighter.
What was his name again?
Blake Vershum.
You remember Roy Smith, that's why I...
No, 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 let's not go there, Mr. Docket.
We don't want him.
No, Mr. Docket.
To elevate him to paid-on-call or something?
Yep, paid-on-call firefighter. So hiring of Daniel Smith and promoting of Blake Vershum.
Okay. Separate, you want separate motions? Okay. I will, I will, well, does somebody else want to make a motion? Okay, Mr. Docket, go ahead.
I got a question.
Okay, got to make the motion first.
I'm not going to make it.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve the hiring of firefighter trainee Daniel Smith contingent on him passing background check and physical.
I'll support.
Okay, motion by Chockley, support by Zelnoc. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Discussion, over to the left.
Who's discussion? Mr. Docket, go ahead.
I'd like to ask the chief what it costs for the background check and the physical. Every month, we're hiring one or two people.
There, there's no cost to the background check. We do that internally in the Police Department, and the physical...
Well, how about the Fire Department?
Yeah, we, we use a, we use the Police Department to do a background check on the firefighter. So there's no cost. And then the physical, I want to say it's around $150.
There was a charge for $178 in the, in the bills.
That might be what it is.
Maybe $178, okay.
For concentra.
Well, I guess, it just seems like we're, we're on a treadmill there with this every month.
Okay, so we have the motion. Do we need a roll call vote, Mr. Docket? Okay, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. Next motion, I move to promote Blake Vershum, Vershum from cadet firefighter to paid-on-call firefighter.
Can I have a spelling of the last name?
V-E-R-S-H-U-M.
And it's Blake?
Blake, B-L-A-K-E.
Thanks.
Well, support.
Okay, motion by Chockley, support by Otto. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, thank you, that passes, 7-0. Thank you. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the second-floor lease agreement. Go ahead, Mr. Ains.
We have with us Lieutenant Smith, he's with the organization that is proposing to lease, if we can work out a deal with him. You authorize the attorneys and myself to negotiate an agreement and bring it back to you? I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Ains to outline what is in the present proposed agreement. If it's approved by you, it'd be subject to preparation of a lease and also approval by the potential leasers or directors.
So our office, Mr. Burns and myself, over the last several days, have had extensive discussions with Lieutenant Smith. On Monday, we received the sort of final last best offer, which contained the terms that we set forth immediately that day in our letter to the board. What the terms that have been proposed are $8 per square foot per year for 4,500 square feet in the second floor of the Township Hall, with a cost of living escalator in years three, four, and five. So there'd be no escalator in the first two years, but then in the out-years, three, four, and five, there'd be an escalator for cost of living. The tenant would pay their share of utilities, excluding expenses such as snowplow and lawn care. The tenant is proposing to do a build-out of approximately $97,300. They would be proposing to leave those improvements in place when they terminate their tenancy. As a result, they've requested that the township reimburse them for 50% of the cost of that build-out, with the reimbursement being prorated over the course of the five years of rent. So essentially, each month, there would be a prorated deduction from what they would pay for rent for the allocation of that build-out. There would be an option to renew the lease for an additional five years at the end of the first five years, with occupancy of the property to commence on April 1, 2018. Lieutenant Smith is here, who can obviously answer any questions about operations. Certainly, either myself or the manager could address any questions regarding terms of the lease or anything of that nature. Our goal was to try to get a sense from the board as to whether the, the price term, the length term, the reimbursement, whether these sorts of things were acceptable before going through the process of drafting a full-blown lease. But based on the document that we've received previously, I, I don't think that we'll have difficulty sussing out the remaining terms of the lease. I think that these are really the terms that are going to be the most difficult.
Also, I gave you a memo today outlining what I consider to be the benefits of this in terms of meeting the goal of occupying the second-floor space, which has been vacant since the building was first constructed, and that it has an effect on several other goals and objectives that the board has listed. And so I think it would be to your advantage to proceed on this basis. I think there's a lot of intangible benefits as well with having another police agency in the building, with having additional police officers in and the community as well as in the building. And I think it would be quite beneficial for you to proceed with this, but certainly terms and conditions could be adjusted. But there's a point at which it doesn't make sense to the potential leaser to, to invest more than a certain amount in the facility. And so I think the, the numbers that the attorneys have worked out with them is probably the most likely scenario for, for reaching a settlement agreement. So, Mr. Smith, if you, Lieutenant Smith, if you'd like to come to the podium, and Chief can turn it back on again after just turning it off. Thank you, Chief.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So we've asked that he come, so if you have any questions about his organization or if you have any questions about what he intends would be built here, or if you want to discuss any aspects of the terms of agreement.
Ms. Otto.
So the terms more or less are for our attorney. So, cost of living indicator, escalator, is there an amount that you considered for the three, four, and five? Or usually, we use a CPI not to exceed.
We talked about using two percent, and we talked about using three percent, we talked about CPI. I don't think, and Lieutenant Smith can correct me if I'm wrong here, I don't think that there's any substantial objection to using any of the three of those. I think it's.
Okay.
No, that would be quite acceptable.
So I think instead of us having a, because I'm now negotiating with you, instead of having three, four, and five, just have not to exceed a certain percentage.
Yeah.
Because in two thousand seventeen, the CPI is two percent. Well, we don't know if it's going to be three percent, one percent. We don't know what's going to be in two thousand eighteen, nineteen, or twenty. So.
I'd be completely in agreement with that.
So what you're contemplating.
You'll have to talk into the mic, because I wear hearing aids, and I won't hear you.
I'll take care of you, Mr. Dockett.
So what you're proposing is a CPI adjustment with a not-to-exceed figure attached to it?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then you can negotiate. Right now, two thousand seventeen was two percent. I'm just saying. The other thing is the reimbursement of forty-eight thousand six hundred and fifty dollars is payable as a prorated deduction for rent over the five years. What is the rent for the, what would be the total rent for the five years?
It's thirty-six thousand a year, correct?
Thirty-six, okay. I wish I had all these figures on.
Well, it's the thirty-six is at the eight, not the ten.
Right.
Right.
Correct.
So which one are we, which one are we, let's figure out. First of all, we made an offer. They gave us a forty percent.
They came back.
Decrease back. So, you know, I own property. When I rent, I tell somebody, six hundred dollars for the apartment, or my building, or whatever, and they come back and tell me, well, no, but we'll give you forty, forty percent less, which you're asking.
Well, the people that are renting your properties are also doing the construction inside the properties either.
I understand, but I'm just saying, we need.
That's the big difference.
We need to know what figure, what, where, what, when we're going to use, ours or theirs. That's all I'm asking. Are we going to get twenty-five thousand, or are we going to get forty?
Ms. Chick, go ahead.
So while you're thinking about that, can I ask, what does LawNet do?
We're a multi-jurisdictional task force that involves state, federal, and local officers, and we primarily target narcotics, but we do do surveillance. Basically, we're kind of the catch-all for what uniforms can't do.
Three counties, right?
That's correct, sir. I've managed Livingston, Washington, Monroe Counties.
And how many employees would be in the building?
At any given time, you could probably have twelve to fifteen law enforcement officers, and then at least five administrative staff at any given time.
Okay, and there's enough parking? You'd be parking in the back? Is that okay?
Yeah, my understanding is we would just take the back area there.
Okay, and you've seen the drawings, the concept drawings for the construction, or no?
Yeah, I was the one who had them made.
And you're comfortable with that? Okay.
That's correct, yes.
Have you seen them?
Should be on your desk.
Oh, well.
Since you don't read your desk.
We just got them today.
Well, I know, but this is, this is what bothers me. They're always the last in it, you know? They don't want to give us time to think about this. It's just sickening with the way they operate.
If I could point out, we had a request from the city clerk for providing a copy of the diagram, and that's why we gave it out at this point. So we try to respond as soon as we get a request from a board member rather than wait till.
We shouldn't have. I got this at four o'clock last night. I didn't get this, but I got this at four o'clock last night. That's not much time for us to work on something that's going to impact. We've got to remember, the taxpayers own this building, not the government.
Where are you centered right now?
Go ahead, Ms. Chick.
Where are you centered right now?
Within the city of Ann Arbor.
Okay, and you've outgrown that building. Is that why you're looking for a new location, or?
That building has been sold.
Oh, okay, all right. So your goal hopefully is to be here longer than five years? Is that?
My goal would be to make it our final.
All right.
So I would not be opposed to being here as long as I'm around, which would be at least another five to ten years, so.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, a question about, have we?
Go ahead, Ms. Who's, go ahead, Ms. Bellinger.
A question regarding the sharing of utilities. What utilities are we considering? And also with the personnel numbers you're talking about, have we considered the facilities, the bathroom facilities, the REUs? Is that going to be, do we have enough?
Ms. Ains.
Okay. They're not talking about building any new facilities, utilizing existing ones. As you note, the ones on this floor are not used during the week, basically. They're used occasionally for meetings. And in addition, when he's talking about that number of staffing, he's not talking about them constantly being in the building, that they'll be floating in and out, a number of them. If I recall, you said there were about four or five that would be pretty much here, and the others would be here at different times. And in some cases, there would be maybe, you know, training sessions where there might be forty or fifty officers here. But that's apparently occurred in the past, as I understand it, Chief, with the fire department's facility.
Yeah, it's, the guys don't spend a lot of time in the office. They're out and about doing it, doing what we do. So it's, it would be relatively few people here.
And as far as parking, if they have a meeting, you know, you have a dead-end street here next to the building, and any overflow could go into that area during those time periods, as long as they don't block police, fire, ambulance services.
How about the divvying up of utilities? Has that been discussed?
Yes, they were discussing putting in meters for the electric. The gas service, it's my understanding, can now be separated out. But we were looking at a percentage of the square footage that they would be utilizing compared to the entire building, which is roughly nine percent of this whole building. And on the water sewer, we had talked in terms of about, I believe it was one or two equivalent units. So those were flat amounts. We could meter it, but it would be pretty expensive to do that. I believe that covered the utilities we were talking about.
That's correct, is my understanding.
Yes.
So this, the plan is? Is the entire rest of this floor, correct?
Right. What it would do is allow you to keep the area where you have a conference table over here and the pot machines, because that was for a future use for an office. Beyond that, they would take everything else. They would maintain a six-foot wide hallway from the back exit to this area, which would still allow you that usage as a fire exit for this building.
Okay, Ms. Manley.
When do you perceive this starting, starting the build-out?
Depending on board approval, we'd like to start as soon as possible. So after your board considers it, and depending on the decision, then my board would have to consider it. And then I'd like to start as soon as possible.
When will rent start? At the time you start build-out?
We would like to start paying rent at the time the build-out is done, because we're paying at the other location. So we wouldn't want to be paying rent for something we can't occupy. So that would be at the time of occupation.
And you've talked about roughly a sixty-day construction time period.
Sooner than that, if possible, because it's basically, there's not a lot to it. It's drywall, doors, some square carpets, and, you know, a couple of secure doors for the outer.
And then have our attorneys, or you, Steve, like gone over any, does it affect our insurances anyhow?
On the insurance, you know, I would expect them to have their own liability and tenant insurance and that type of thing. The structure of the building outside of their area would be covered under our normal insurance.
Regarding the build-out, what, are we talking just partitions? Are we talking real structure, such as the wall over here, and who would be paying for these, the planning and the inspections and so forth?
That would be, that's all worked into the cost that we've listed. So it would be partially LawNet, partially Northfield Township.
To pay for the inspections and the planning and all of this?
Correct.
And the other question was, how is the, is it just partitions, or is it wall structure?
It's structure.
Lieutenant Smith, correct me if I'm wrong, didn't the ninety-seven number not include the soft costs, like engineering and things like that? I thought it was just construction costs.
You know, I guess I'd have to take a look at that, but that would be something that we would have to take a look at. So maybe I'm mistaken.
That was my recollection, but I may be wrong about that.
Oh, well, we should certainly should be paying for engineering.
No, that's already been taken care of.
And the inspector's not going to come for nothing. You know, so the zoning and inspections and the planning commission, all that stuff, they should be paying for, not us.
Ms. Zelnik.
So with this build-out cost, what if there's cost overruns? I mean, how confident are you with your number?
We feel pretty good about it, but if the cost overruns, obviously, we would have to take a look at it. But I don't foresee it being anything that LawNet probably wouldn't step up and just take care of, as long as it wasn't something structural. I mean, if our plans are solid, we've already had them looked at by an architect, I think we're.
So is that part of the, you know, contract then, that we wouldn't pay for any cost overruns unless it was considered structural?
That's certainly something that we could negotiate. It's not been discussed at this point, but that's certainly something that could be included in the lease, absolutely.
Yeah, I would not be opposed to that, especially if it was something that was caused by what we wanted, rather than what Northfield wanted. Obviously, if it was something that Northfield wanted to incorporate in, we'd have to talk about it, but that's very reasonable.
And then, how did you come up with the proposal to have the township pay half of it, as opposed to just reducing the rent that you would pay? You know, the square footage?
Exactly what I was going to ask.
I believe that's how it's incorporated in over five years.
Right, so why wouldn't you just lower the square footage run to aim, to take into consideration the build-out? So I think instead of being your proposal of like eight dollars a square foot, why wouldn't it just be five dollars and eighty-five cents a square foot? Which would take into account the ninety-seven thousand dollar build-out. It might simplify things.
Less messy.
My understanding is we need to charge something close to, relatively close to market rate, and we can do that, but then we could give credit for the actual physical structure? That's my understanding in why it can be reduced.
Right, so essentially, what's happening is realistically, you've got two transactions here. You have the leasing of the space for five years, where we're getting a market rent for the space. Then you have essentially, at the end of the term of the lease, we're getting lease, we're getting the improvements, which have a construction cost. So effectively, we're paying a reduced cost for depreciated improvements at the end of the period, and we're being paid a lease payment. Both of which, theoretically, since LawNet's also a public body, they have to get fair market value for their improvements that they're leaving here, and we have to get fair market value for the rent. So in an effort to be transparent, rather than wrapping them into one number, which doesn't appear to be fair market value for anybody, the goal was to represent both of them as what they were. And the final point is, that's how we got the proposal from LawNet.
So I was just, I wanted to understand that. And how did you, you know, decide it was fifty-fifty? Because if you're here five years, there's depreciation to the assets.
Correct.
And then if you're here ten years, there's, again, depreciation to the assets. So the assets aren't typically worth as much, obviously, day one, as they are ten years, or ten years after day one.
Well, essentially, what we did is we contacted a Realtor, and that was what his recommendation was for us to ask for, was the fifty percent on the build-out. He's a, he rents property in Ann Arbor. He said he would do, that's common, if it's an empty space, he'll meet you halfway and build it out. So that's, I'll be honest with you, that's, I went with his recommendation.
Because I think initially, I had heard it was twenty-five percent that we would pay.
That was what we had proposed.
Okay, and where did you get your proposed numbers from?
That was just a number that we chose.
This is after they, this is after they made their proposal at ten. Then our manager, our township manager, reduced. So we're, so what's the, can't you tell us how much we're going to get? After five, first of all, if it's going to be ten years, we should have that in there. We have a right to refuse, just like.
Well, you can.
I would, I'd be against giving them five and five more without us, you know, without us saying, no, we don't want to give it another five. So.
That could be written into the, that can be written into the agreement. But all they're asking for.
Too many people talking.
Really, all they're asking for is the option to, is to lease again for five years. I mean, that is pretty good.
But is it a guarantee? I mean, how is that option being written, meaning?
Then you can negotiate what the rent is at that point.
I know.
And we can say yes or no, just like.
Let Ms. Zelnik speak now.
Yeah, I mean, is that how the option?
Now, listen, everybody else is just bumping in wherever they want. So don't give me any of your crap.
So that's what I wanted to know, Mr. Dockett, is that, is the option, you know, at our discretion as well as LawNet, or does LawNet think it's at their discretion only?
No.
I would say it would be at your discretion as well. That sounds very fair to me.
Okay, just wanted to make sure with that.
That's why I mentioned.
I agree with you. I had that down here, too. Thank you.
It'd be mutually agreed.
Okay, I think, so according to my numbers, we'll probably after five years, net a hundred and thirty-two thousand, maybe a little more than that, a hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars.
That was my math as well. One eighty minus forty-eight, six fifty.
Yep. So anyway, we could do a lot with that. And we have potentially, and this is part B, maybe that's why Mr. Ains can, included this other, this other paper up here, that we could potentially, for economy of scale, build a wall across that area there and have a conference room up here. This would help our space needs downstairs and potentially build out some storage up here, too. So that's another decision of the board at a future time. But anyway, I think it's, this is a win-win for both of us. Ms. Chick?
Okay, so I'd like to make a motion to approve the lease of forty-five hundred square feet in Northville Township Public Safety Building at a rate of eight dollars per square foot a year with a cost of living escalator in three to four, three, four, and five.
CPI.
CPI, I apologize. The tenant paying its share of utilities, excluding expenses such as snowplow and lawn care, a fifty percent reimbursement of tenant build-out, the full cost of which is estimated at ninety-seven thousand three hundred dollars. Reimbursement of forty-eight thousand six hundred and fifty dollars is payable as a prorated deduction from rent over five years, the option to renew the lease for an additional five years, and occupy the occupancy of the property on April first, two thousand eighteen. That's it?
You said excluding lawn and snow, didn't you? Okay, good.
Excluding, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
So motion, and we have an interjection here by our attorney.
I do have an interjection, because the question was raised about putting a ceiling on the cost reimbursement at forty-eight, six fifty, absent discovery of some sort of structural problem with the building. So that should be in there as well.
It could be amended.
And the option to renew the lease is on the written mutual agreement of the parties, correct?
Correct, yes.
And utilities? And utilities.
That was there.
It's already there.
I didn't hear anything about utilities.
You said it.
Yeah.
She, she said it.
I did.
Okay. Okay, so we have a motion by Chick.
I'll support.
And support by Otto. Let's have a roll call vote, please.
Oh, wait a minute, let's have a discussion.
Oh, discussion, more discussion, okay. Go ahead, Ms. Bellinger.
Um, could we entertain maybe the fifty percent to be, can we maybe amend it to maybe forty percent or thirty-five?
You make a motion if you wanna do that, to amend it.
Yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to make a motion to amend the fifty percent reimbursement of tenant build out to forty percent.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Bellinger. Do we have a support?
Support.
Support by Mr. Dockett. Any more discussion on that one? Okay, roll call vote on the amendment.
Who, oh, wait a minute, who puts up the hundred grand?
We do.
It's not in here, but doesn't say here.
It's assumed by him saying that they're gonna do the build out.
They're building it. Okay, so we have a, a motion.
Roll call.
Roll call.
I'm sorry, is this the motion to amend?
This is the motion to amend, to, to reduce the amount that the township needs to pay to, how much?
Forty, forty percent.
Forty percent.
So just to do the math, I just ran that, that takes it from the forty-eight, six fifty to thirty-seven, seven twenty. So that's a difference of. Ten thousand, nine thirty. A year. Yes. No, over the lifetime. Yes.
Over the lifetime?
Yeah.
Over five years.
Over five years, yes. Ten thousand over five years, two thousand a year, so.
Divided by five.
About twenty-two hundred a year.
Okay. Can we do the roll call vote on that?
Sorry.
Okay, that's okay.
How much is it a year?
It would be about twenty-two hundred dollars difference a year between forty percent and fifty percent.
Okay, Mr.?
Just because I know that we had significant discussions about this number with LawNet. Before you vote on this, you may wanna ask Lieutenant Smith if that's a proposal that he'd be recommending for or against his board? Because I think that may be relevant to your analysis.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Smith, what do you think?
I can't recommend that.
Okay.
I've already spoken to the board. They've, they saw the twenty-five percent, they said a fifty percent is reasonable. So I'll just be honest with you, that's what I believe my board will vote on. I will not recommend one way or the other. I'll leave it up to them.
Okay. Okay, roll call vote, please.
Zelenak?
No.
Dockett?
No.
Chick?
No.
Otto?
No.
Manley?
No.
Bellinger?
Yeah.
Chocly?
No. Okay, the amendment did not pass. Okay, so we're back to the main motion by Chick and support by Otto to accept the second floor lease agreement as just.
As discussed.
As discussed, yes. Okay, roll call vote on that, please.
Roll call. I didn't have a discussion. Bellinger?
Bellinger, yes.
Otto?
Yes.
Chocly?
Yes.
Zelenak?
Yes.
Manley, yes. Dockett?
No.
Chick?
Yes.
Okay, that passes six one. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Look forward to that.
Thank you, Lieutenant.
In the event that Lieutenant Smith's board agrees in principle to the terms, we'll be obviously bringing the lease back at the next board meeting in full drafted so that the board can approve that.
Great, thank you.
Thank you again.
Yes, thank you very much.
Welcome aboard.
Okay, the next item is the DDA proposal to manage seventy-five Barker.
Well, you know, I may say, I wanna, before Chief Wagner leaves, but I just wanna say, I wanna thank him for bringing this to our attention.
Right.
So, thank you very much, Chief.
I forgot, they're gonna go out and shake hands. Okay, here we go. The next item is the DDA attempt to, or proposal to manage seventy-five Barker. And I've written a little memo associated with this. You have the proposal, and I would like to move to accept the proposal by the DDA to manage seventy-five Barker. And you see the terms below. They will come to the board, they don't wanna take it over, but they will come to the board for any financial commitments that they, they may need for this. And they're requesting. Yeah, they're requesting thirty thousand dollars to seek inspection quotes. I need that part of it, too. Three thousand, yes, three thousand to seek inspection quotes and engage in contract for the inspections. So I guess, let me just clean my motion up. I will move to accept the proposal by the DDA to manage seventy-five Barker. As presented in your packet. So there's a motion by Chocly. Do I have any support?
The board still has final say?
Yes. Well, you know, yes, but they would like to manage, manage it and, and get businesses in there. And you know how difficult, well, to have seven people kinda trying to manage something.
Well, they've got eleven people trying to manage.
They have more of us than us.
They do have more, but they're not in front of the cameras every night, you know, every meeting. But anyway, they also have expertise in this area and, and I think an vested interest in what happens downtown. Mr. Seacrest is here tonight, and I know he hasn't come up to speak in the public comment time, but he helped to draft this with Barb Griffith, who is the DDA chairperson, so, you know. Mr. Seacrest, did you have any comment that you would like to add on this proposal at this time? No, okay. Mr. Dockett?
Well, I said earlier, I wanna know if they're gonna get the ten thousand dollars. If they are, why do we have to give them three thousand dollars?
No, they're not going to, the ten thou, the six, what is it, ninety-six?
Well, I.
Thousand, yeah, about ten thousand dollars, right, that we're getting in rent. Right, but if they can get this rented out to more businesses, we can get more rent than that. And they, what they needed, what, that building is aging and it needs attention, and we need someone who want, who, who can manage it. And there is at least that, that bit of money that can be used to improve the building, get it inspected, make sure it's ADA compliant if necessary, and, and make sure it's up to.
They're gonna get ten thousand every year rent, plus they're gonna get the ten thousand that we have there. Why do they need three, three thousand dollars? That's my question, that's my question.
They wanted to borrow the three thousand dollars from the, from the ten thousand dollars that the township has so that they can get the inspections done and make sure that it's a safe building.
Who's gonna collect the?
The township will.
We still keep the rent.
Yeah.
We're gonna continue getting the rent?
Right, the, the, the DDA is not asking to have the money. They will come and request money if they need it to paint, to put in new windows, or whatever they, whatever needs to be done to improve the building so that it can be rented out.
And who's gonna pay for that? Us.
It's coming out of the ten thousand dollars rent every, every year that the township gets. The last, the last paint job was pathetic.
We're already gonna give them thirteen thousand, is that right?
What?
No.
No.
Clarify that, we're keeping the rent.
We, we are keeping, the township is keeping all the rent. Okay, but the, the DDA is requesting some of that rent to go ahead and get an inspection done and to make improvement, you know, and so that they know what needs to happen to improve the building.
So all they're asking for is three thousand dollars of expenditures allocated.
Right now, yes.
So we have a, do we have a second on the motion yet?
We do not have a second yet on the motion, so, motion by Chocly.
So do they get to determine who's going to rent it, or is that a board decision? If we own, it's our property, right, the township?
Right, and it's not being given away.
No, I understand that, but we have to approve the business that goes in it, correct? Or we don't, or they do?
No, they, I would think that that's part of the management of it.
Pardon me?
That's part of the management of it, is they can go recruit, they wanna put an RFP out to, to get businesses in there.
But they're not gonna come into the board and have, you know, say, we recommend this business, and the board says yes?
Right, that's my understanding, is they won't be coming to the board. I mean, that's the point of having a, a land, a manager, a property manager. And the DDA would like to do that. And there's, you know, definite legal background to allow that to happen with a DDA.
I mean.
Ms. Zelenak, you had a?
No, go ahead.
No?
Mr. Dockett.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Dockett.
An elevator. Before we do this, folks, realize what an elevator's gonna cost.
Oh, I know.
So.
Yeah, we do.
Think about that, because if you think that, that we've been spending money there so far, because there, you cannot put the elevator inside that. You have to put it on the outside. And they cut a big hole in the top of it when the fire trucks were in there with all exhaust fans. It's condemned upstairs. You're looking at a real money pit, folks. Thank you.
That's the point of the inspections, so that we can find out really how, how much work it might need.
It's not work, it's money.
It, it's the beginning.
You know, probably a half a million dollars, but what do, what do we pay for this elevator to get it to inspect?
Let's not worry about an elevator, it hasn't been recommended yet.
They'll take the building's workers without it. We got it, we got it running, so.
Ms. Manley?
I guess my question is, like, right now, sorry.
Oh, you're on, okay.
Yeah, I'm on. How much of that space is rentable right now? Because I mean, our next question, our next vote is letting Kwanis move in there. So, I'm kinda like, are we gonna tell Kwanis, okay? And then have another lease come in, in two months, and we'll kick Kwanis out? So I guess I don't know enough about the building, like, how much right now is actually leasable?
We don't know how much of the building is actually safe. I mean, we have the fire bays, okay.
That's my question one before Kwanis.
Right, right now, we've got national health staffing, anyway, we have, we have some rent by, and it's on a month-to-month lease. They're occupying some of the space. The Kwanis is proposing to use the fire bay. My question about this is, and my concern about this is that we follow our own rules. And our own rules, if this is a change of use, we need to take a look at what it, what needs to happen there to make sure that it's safe and, and we're following our rules for any businesses that are in there. Part of that involves getting an inspection and having, you know, having the use evaluated. So now, we have a fire bay that used to be a, you know, who knows what all, over all these years. And now it's potential to be a retail place? What, what do we require there in, in relation to ADA compliance? You know, and sprinklers or whatever else, fire safety issues? We don't even, we don't know where we're at with that. And that's the point of the inspection and, and making sure we're following our own rules. Ms. Chick?
So, real quickly, Chief, you've been in there multiple times, you've seen the condition of many things in that building. Is it safe to be occupied by a business?
At least the fire bay.
As Mr. Dockett mentioned, the second floor, there, there's a whole file on this downstairs.
Right.
And recommendations and inspections that have been completed by engineers and architects. Certainly not the second floor. The second floor is condemned to one or two people, I believe, is how it's stated. The first floor, I, I'm guessing it's not ADA compliant. It's, while, while we certainly have, you know, had Christmas tree sales and chicken sales over the past, that's a decision the board's gonna have to make, but I'm guessing our building department, if we went through the process that Marlene had just mentioned, would probably require quite a few updates before it's occupied on a regular basis.
Okay.
Did, did we ever clean up the pollution? I don't believe we ever did, we did?
Yep, the, we.
We're gonna clean the sheet.
We removed, yep, we removed that.
I know we removed it, but, but there was still problems.
Yep, no, they dug it all out, and we have, we have that, it should be in the file in the township.
Yeah, I think we should look that up because I think they said there were some other parts of the building.
Well, I'm, I'm only speaking of where that one fuel oil tank was that we knew, just outside the fire base.
That's right, but they said it was some other ones.
So is that information still valid? I mean, could we use that as opposed to getting another full-blown inspection?
You know.
That was my question.
I, I would have to look at that again. I, I wanna say it was an architect that looked at it and not an engineer, and you might need to have an engineer look at it. That's not, that's not my field of expertise.
Yeah, I think there's some concern about the trusses in the fire bay.
Yeah, and Mr. Dockett's correct, they did actually remove a beam that supported the second floor and then kind of rebuilt it like, you know, we used to do in the nineteen sixties. And, and it, you know, it just wouldn't pass code now, so.
Okay, Ms. Bellinger?
Well, in fact, it's condemned.
Yeah, Ms. Bellinger?
I mean, it sounds like you're just, they're asking for three thousand dollars to get inspections and whatnot, which we can certainly do if, I thought we already didn't maybe have that in mind for the manager, or the some, for the township to already do that, that we don't need to allocate three thousand dollars to the DDA to, to manage this structure. I don't, I don't see the need for that.
Ms. Manley?
I guess that's kinda my question, Julie, I have no problem with the three thousand dollars. You know, I think it needs to be inspected, but is this something that we feel we can't handle? Or why do, why do we wanna turn this over to the DDA?
It was. They requested up to three thousand dollars, and they had some estimates that they thought.
And I'm okay with the money.
And they, you know, and they'll, they'll look at what we have. You know, we have a, a group of fairly savvy business people on the DDA that are not stupidly gonna spend money. So they will look at what we already have. But when you're looking at attracting a business, and we need, you need to have a building that has adequate heat and, you know, unless we're requiring them to build it out, like we have LawNet building it out. But they would be able to evaluate the building and then go out for an RFP to find businesses that may be interested in locating there. Mr. Fink had brought in somebody who wanted to make some sort of a wedding venue or brewery here.
Microbrewery.
Microbrewery.
But that costs too much in, in a township that does not have city water.
Correct, but there may be other businesses that are looking for a space like this and, and would have some money to do that. You know, and there have been a couple different businesses proposed for some of, some of that building and it's, and the fire bay. So.
The DDA just gave twenty-two thousand, twenty-four thousand dollars to the, to the park system. They get, they, they, that's the whole thing. The DDA already collects all this tax money. Why in the world do we have to give them anything?
They haven't, they haven't attracted any money for probably at least a decade.
Where'd they, where'd they just get the twenty-four thousand?
That came from the Chamber of Commerce.
Right. They haven't had any income because the DDA has been declining over the years. I mean, the downtown district has declined in its tax base over.
The downtown district goes from Green Oak Township to North Territorial.
It does, and we haven't had an increase in the SEV there, so they haven't captured any funds. This is a starting point for, for it. And if we, if we really care about our downtown, we really need to move ahead. You know, with having this, having a group of people be able to manage it that have a vested interest in the downtown, like the DDA does. So, anyway, Ms. Chick?
Well, can I make a motion to table this item until we, maybe if we can have somebody come and speak to it? There's, it sounds like there's a lot of questions out there, and I'm not comfortable voting, yeah.
Okay, so, all right, I didn't get a second, so we have a motion to table by Ms. Chick until we, and support by Ms. Bellinger to get somebody from potentially the DDA to come and speak to this.
So can we have discussion on a tabled motion?
No, I don't think so.
No.
No.
No, 'cause, I mean, okay.
Could just drop the motion.
I mean, sure, let's take a vote. I know, I mean, we can vote, but I, I would like the township to maintain the final decisions 'cause here it just says the rent, they'll designated the expenses, and I, I want them to come forth and say what they're gonna be doing with it. And also, I believe the DDA has thirty-six thousand dollars in there, so if they wanna do some of it, let's share some of the cost. Or they can pick up the initial cost and go from there. We split the pavement. I know that. That was a very significant cost, right? How much was it? That much. So maybe we split the cost, so that's what it, so we can table it. But that's the questions I would like, I'd still like that, so table it. Have them come, but, you know, with the direction that, you know, I don't think we wanna give up full authority. Okay. Roll call vote, right, Madam Chair? Yep, roll call vote, I guess.
Roll call vote on what?
On tabling this motion until we get someone to come from the DDA to discuss it.
I'll table it forever.
Amen.
Okay.
Bellager.
Yes.
Oh, thanks. Docket.
Yes.
Zelenak.
Yes.
Chocley.
No.
Manley, yes. Otto.
Yes.
Chick.
Yes.
Okay, it's tabled. We'll get somebody to come to, can speak to this some more. Maybe, um, Ms., Barb Griffith can come to, to talk about it.
I don't want to support this, no. You got to vote out.
You're so used to saying no.
Okay. Thank you, that, that did not pass.
Hasn't passed ten of them.
All right, next item. The Kiwanis request to use seventy-five Barker Fire Bay.
So, we have a request from Kiwanis and both Jackie and I are board members of Kiwanis. So, as you, as people have said, the store that we, Kiwanis has hold its weekend rummage sale is in the process of being leased to another tenant. Kiwanis has been asked to move out as soon as possible. The last day for the weekend sale was Saturday, January sixth. This is obviously bittersweet for us because we are happy to see a new business in town, but we are sad to have to close. With this said, Kiwanis would like to use the Fire Bay at seventy-five Barker to continue its weekend rummage sales until the township has a need to use this portion of seventy-five Barker. If the board agrees, we would hope to have discussion on how to proceed. In addition, though, we'd like to thank all the members of our community who have supported the weekend rummage sale and supported Kiwanis as we see for the last seventy, seventy years. We truly do appreciate that support. And I will add one thing, because at our last board meeting, I mean, our last Kiwanis meeting, we received a certificate from the state of Michigan honoring the seventy years that Kiwanis has been supporting the community, so that was awful nice, so. So with that said, I mean, we talk about, I know, Madam Chair, you've talked about, or supervisor, about ADA compliant. I don't know. It's, I'm not sure how all that works and, you know, we are there full-time. I've been in, you know, I don't know, there is a bathroom. I've been in stores and we can ask the building department and all that. I've been in stores that, to me, don't even have restrooms, so I'm not sure how that works. So, anyway. But in the mermarium, bear, I mean, so if there's any thought that we could use this for the rummage sale, we'd like to know because we'd like to move some of our items there. If there is no thought that we could use it, then we need to get rid of the items at the store. So, as being a board member, I can discuss, but will not be voting.
Okay. Ms. Otto.
The other thing is, is that I also had discussions with Mary Bird and with Vadia as far as getting site planning and getting us approved with the change. So we have had discussions. I do have a deliverable to Vadia in regards to this, in the event that this, and it was not based on seventy-five Barker, it was based on another building that we were considering and decided, they decided not to move forward.
Oh, okay. So, but if we're gonna be a landlord, this is a probably change of use for that fire bay, so we will need to get.
Yeah, it is a change of use, so.
Involved with that. Ms. Manley.
I guess my personal opinion, I'm all for it. One, as long as the building's safe. And again, as long as we're compliant like any other business would be. But the safety's kinda my first thought.
Yeah. Ms. Chick?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the Kiwanis request.
Come on.
Ms. Chick.
Make a motion.
Yeah, she can make a motion.
I can.
I would like to make a motion.
I can.
To approve Kiwanis' request to use seventy-five Barker Fire Bay for their resale shop.
I support.
Contingent on.
Contingent upon.
Be receiving zoning compliance?
Yes.
Approval?
And working out the terms of the lease?
And working out the terms of the lease.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Oh, darn.
And who's, and who's gonna work out these terms? Well, but wait, we gotta get that, that motion clarified, yeah. So.
Make a motion to approve Kiwanis' request to use seventy-five Barker Fire Bay for their resale shop contingent upon, excuse me.
Contingent.
The site plan approval and the, uh.
Zoning compliance?
Terms of the lease.
Okay, but site plan approval meaning the zoning compliance approval?
Yeah.
Full compliance. No, we're just impursed.
Wow. This is not, anyway.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, and working out the terms of the lease.
Jackie can.
Ton.
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 Okay. And who's gonna work out these terms of the lease?
The attorney.
The attorney? Okay.
With our attorney.
With our attorney.
Okay.
The non-voters still there.
Okay, so we have more discussion down here? Mr. Docket.
I don't want everybody beating up on me because I'm gonna vote for this. But I wanna know one thing. How much was they paying Bollies?
We were paying seven hundred dollars a month.
We got the first year or better.
Well, they must've, they must've.
So, but anyway, seven hundred dollars. And yes, we did get the first year free to get our, or, I, it was gonna be six months and then it ended up maybe a year to get our store started.
Wow, okay.
Well, that is about the only thing that could probably.
Okay, that's enough.
Don't go in that building.
I agree.
So I would vote for that.
Cool. Okay.
Well, they will need to, the terms of the lease. Is there a second?
Yes. There was a motion by.
Ton.
A motion by Chick and support by Ton. I mean, Bellager. Okay, roll call vote, please.
Um, Chick.
Yes.
Manley, yes. Chocley?
Yes.
Docket?
Yes.
Bellager?
Yes.
And Zelenak and Otto.
Upstate.
Upstate.
Okay, that passes. All right, the next item is ZBA appointments.
How much is the beat to join round?
Okay. Okay. So, we have two, it's been challenging to get people to apply to, to serve on our boards and commissions, but we have two excellent candidates for zoning board of appeals at this point. And both of them have planning commission experience and Mr. Balsili had been the secretary of the planning commission for quite a while and then chair. And Ken Dignan has served on both bodies and had been chair of both bodies, so, and secretary, I think, of one of them. So they're both excellent individuals to serve on our zoning board and, so.
I, I would like to make a motion to have Ken Dignan as the primary on the ZBA board of appeals.
Support.
Okay, so we have a motion by Ms. Otto and support by Mr. Docket. And I, I, the only comment I wanna make about this is that Mr. Dignan is the chair of the Whitmore Lake School Board and my goal and get, is getting people involved, more people involved. And I don't have an issue, you know, but I just thought it'd be.
Well, he wanted to get on the planning commission, you wouldn't let him on.
He wouldn't be on planning commission, that's okay.
Well, Mr. Dignan has expressed that he does not wanna be on the planning commission.
He wanted to be on it, she didn't, she wouldn't wanna be on it.
Well, with this situation, he doesn't wanna be on the planning commission, but I felt the need to, we need an experienced person on the ZBA. Ken is more than capable of being on the ZBA. He knows the ordinance, he knows our township. And there's no learning.
He's the smartest guy in the township on that.
Who's he replacing?
Um, well, we have Ans.
He would be replacing Gary Wellings.
Gary, oh.
Gary moved us to.
Yes, Gary Wellings, and then we needed another, we needed an alternate.
To replace.
So, so he's replacing Gary, is that correct? Mr. Wellings.
He's replacing Gary.
Okay.
Is filling out.
Filling out the term ending twenty, twenty?
Twenty twenty.
Three years, it's, it's a regular three-year term. They're both regular three-year terms. Okay, so we have a motion by Ms. Otto and a support by Mr. Docket. And, yeah, my only, my only thing is, is the serving on multiple boards and, you know, including more people. And, but, you know, I'm glad to have Mr. Balsili actually apply also, he's, he's excellent. Except I've served with him on the planning commission, so I know him too. Okay. Roll call vote.
I will not vote on Balsili.
We're, we're voting on.
On Ken.
I, I, I'm not voting for Balsili, no.
Okay, we're, we're voting on Ken right now. Okay. Okay. Might as well, roll call.
Docket?
Yes.
Chocley?
Yes.
Manley, yes. Otto?
Yes.
Zelenak?
Yes.
Bellager?
Yes.
Chick?
Yes.
Okay.
Then the next one is we'd appoint Jim Balsili as the alternate for the ZBA.
Yes.
Do we need to have a motion?
For the term ending December two thousand and two, I'm making the motion.
Okay, I'll support.
Okay, motion by Zelenak, support by Otto. Can we do all in favor?
No, I don't, I will not vote for Balsili.
Okay, roll call vote.
He's, he was on, he was on the planning commission for, I don't know, years and years and years and years.
Chick?
Yes.
Zelenak?
Yes.
Chocley?
Yes.
Docket?
No.
Otto?
Yes.
Manley, yes. Bellager?
No.
Okay, that passes with Docket and Bellager voting no. Okay, great. Thank you very much. Now we have a full board again, this is great. Okay.
We needed it for January.
All right, the next item is the railroad easement. So I guess I'll make a motion. Yeah?
Yep, that we, let me see, that we obtain the three easements for a cost of one thousand one hundred dollars.
Wait, did somebody get them signed?
Motion by Zelenak and support by Otto. Okay, now we can have discussion.
Well, if you don't, unless you got the guy to sign, you don't wanna get two.
Right. Okay, but now it's time for discussion. Mr. Ains, did you wanna deal with this?
Who else? Mr. Docket said, there's three parcels.
There is.
Two of which are behind ours, so we can go and get those for sure. The other one we have to get signed off, so we'll try that first. And if we can't get it, then we'll come back to you and ask for approval to get the two.
Okay. I think there's an advantage to having all three of them.
Certainly.
In, in that if we wanted to do a trail in back all the way down to Barker Road, we could theoretically do that eventually. Mr. Docket?
If the guy signs off that one, why don't we go for the fourth one too? Cause he owns both of them.
Does he?
Yeah, so we'll get another one. It'll take some time, but I, I would, I would go for the three. I, I know the railroad or, well, the state of Michigan, so the railroad's owned by the, by, by the M-Dot. So it takes years to do it. So I'd get the three, if the guy signs off, then I would ask the guy to sign off two of them.
Okay.
Cause it's forty.
It's a good idea. Go ahead.
That's fine. And from what Jennifer told me, this had languished for years with them, but then they've got a new person in. And the new person is the one that came to her and got it expedited. So hopefully if there is another one, we can work on that too.
But she offered us for nothing, the house and the lot. This board, I said, yes, let's get it. This board said, oh, let's wait on it. So the next week, the lady calls and says, I'm sorry, but I sold it. So that's how stupid we are.
No, 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 oh, no. Just say prior boards or something. Don't, don't keep saying this board.
Prior board.
All right, we have a motion by Ms. Zelenak and support by Otto. Okay.
Really stupid ones.
Okay, wait.
I wasn't stupid. Sorry. I could go for it.
All right, so the motion is to go ahead, well, state your motion again, Ms. Zelenak.
Um.
To move.
Move forward to obtain the three easements that would add a cost of one thousand one hundred dollars.
Okay.
Subject to our review of the easement documents?
Of course. Thank you. Subject to the review of the easement documents by our attorneys. Okay.
All right, roll call vote, please.
Uh, Zelenak?
Yes.
Docket?
Yes.
Chick?
Yes.
Otto?
Yes.
Manley, yes. Bellager?
Yes.
Chocley?
Yes.
Okay, the next item is for the.
Yeah, I'll, I'll just speak to it really quick.
Yep.
The board approved the independent contractor policy. They also approved the independent contractor agreement template. So all this is to give, the motion will be to give our Paul Burns office to draft the agreements for Jim Nelson and Lisa Lumbel. They're the last of the two, they're the two people that do not have contracts, who are considered independent contractors. And if there's any changes to pricing structure, payment schedule, or other specific requirements not addressed currently, just to have our township, direct the township manager to negotiate any changes to the agreement.
Okay, so we have a motion by Ms. Otto.
So I will make the motion to, to approve to have our legal counsel and township manager to initiate the independent contractor agreement for Jim Nelson and Lisa Lumbel.
Okay, I'll support that.
Support.
much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Mr. Nelson's coming up.
Am I on?
Yeah.
I'd just like to point out that one of the side benefits of putting all this video on YouTube and doing the live agenda is that it's closed captioned. It's closed captioned automatically because Google is the biggest computer in the world, and that would cost you hundreds of dollars to get done any, any other way. And I know the manager asked for that through Jennifer Carlyle, and it's not something you can get on live stream. I'd also like to thank Ton Bellinger for showing the way of using the video that's available online to excerpt and, and isolate her own, her own speeches, at least in One Case or Facebook, because the video's there, it's public property, it can be argued that it's intellectual property of somebody, but it's not yours, Ms. Otto.
That's not-
It doesn't belong to the board, it belongs to the taxpayers, and the easiest way to make that stuff happen is to do what I do. And as far as expertise in intellectual property is concerned, my wife ran global intellectual property at General Motors. That's a real executive position. I know you compared yourself to her, but you're not the equal.
Okay, let's-
Anyway, I'm done.
Thank you. Yep, let's, let's not be personal about it, our comments. I know it's personal, Jim, but, you know, let, let's not attack, let's not attack, it, he feel, he, let's, let's not attack each other. Yeah, let's not attack each other.
David Gordon, 5558 Helmer Road. I wanted to thank Chief Wagner for bringing lawn net to the community. I've been asking for the second floor of this building to get rented for, how many years has it been empty? Twelve years? Generating no money, generating nothing but debt.
2002. It was built 2002.
Great. Yeah, that was, that was a highlight of our community's spending, so thank you, Chief. I'd like to reiterate the fact that it'd be nice if some processes were put in place so that these meetings don't go till after 10:30 at night. I know Mr. Docket likes to jump in there and say things, but I, I do believe that if I sat down with a recording of tonight's meeting, there's got to be 45 minutes or an hour that's, that's simply taken up with either making statements or asking questions that could have been asked before the meeting, which just takes up everybody else's time. I mean, I appreciate his involvement and his passion for this, although some of the rudeness could be improved. Rudeness improved or, or, you know, eliminated, maybe, would be better. And in terms of processing, in terms of spending money, the last recommendation I would have is, listen to Ms. Zelenak, your treasurer. The woman has more than 30 years of professional experience in the world of finance, and I've yet to hear her make a recommendation that isn't common sense. Madam Supervisor, the long meetings are still on you. You got the gavel. I mean, I'd love to bring one in myself, I might start bringing in my own gavel, just to see if we could make these meetings a little faster, but there's a whole lot of gab that's, that's not productive. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, board member comments? Ms. Bellinger?
Just want to say Happy New Year, and I, and also congratulations again for Kwanis getting the 70-year award, that is outstanding, and maybe, I'd like a little more information on that, too, if somebody could maybe share that, here at the board member comments, a little more about that award. And thank you for coming out, public, and thank you for enjoying the long meeting, and thank you both, Lisa and Jim. Thanks again, Chief.
Okay. Mr. Docket, do you have a comment?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Oh, I want to earn my 125 bucks, that's why I talk a lot. $187,000, that's why it takes us so long, we've got a lot to talk about. And that's, I'd like to have you buy and use local services, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Zelenak, do you have a comment?
No.
No comment? Okay. Ms. Manley?
Um, just quickly, thanks again to Chief for the lawn net. I think it's going to be a great thing for the community.
I'd like to take all the credit for that, but it's not just me, there's a couple of officers within the department that actually did some of the legwork for that, so-
Thank them for us.
Yes, it's not just me, thank you.
Yep.
And thank you, Steve, for this drawing, I never knew it existed. I'm not going to be bothering you about it, so, just give you a heads up, because we need this.
Ms. Otto, do you have a comment?
Uh, yes, Happy New Year to everyone, and thank you to the board for supporting the Kwanis at 75 Barker, and thank you to the community, and thank you, Mary and Margaret.
Thank you. Ms. Chick, do you have a comment?
A short one, I hope. I hope, I'm hoping that the board will reconsider when the master plan issue comes back before the board for funding. I think it's important that before that time, that the board members look into exactly what is required to do a master plan and the involvement the planner has in it, because it's not something that we can do on our own, and the cost that they're giving us and the breakdown they're giving us is considerable compared to what it would be for a full-blown master plan. We, one of our priorities was that we support the master plan, and we just didn't, so that is a kind of dissension to me. And, and the redevelopment of our downtown area, which is what tweaking the master plan and rezoning would do for that area, and now we're kind of push it back again, so, just hope that we reconsider that when it comes before, then do a little research, talk to the planning commissioners, talk to the chair, talk to the planner, and, and he will tell you exactly what is involved in doing it. They have tools and knowledge that we don't have available to us, mapping and GPS and that kind of thing, so, just, that's my thought. And Kwanis, thank you so much for what you do for our community. I've been in the store, I've donated to the store, so you do a wonderful job over there, very appreciative, very happy you'll be over across the street there, so, we'll see you there.
Okay, thank you, and I guess, I'm looking forward to a great 2018, and I think we've made some progress here in recent meetings, and I, you know, I have high hopes for this community in 2018, and I expect us to work together, and we're going to accomplish something amazing, I think, over the next few years, especially now that we're done with the automated traffic management, and I think we're going to get a lot of interest in our community coming up, so, thank you all, and I'll see you in three weeks, two weeks, something like that, two weeks. Move to adjourn?
Support.
Motion by Shockley, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.[1470.12]